Easy. All right, let's see, is it time to get rolling here? All right, welcome to the pre mean for January 25th, we were. Ogden Valley Plan Commission. So in terms of walking us through some of these items. Want to go ahead and walk us through the three. ZDAs. I don't know if. Steve do anything on the. The. Administrative item, you think? Okay, look, let's start with Tammy. Tammy, are you there?
Okay, sorry, guys, trying to unmute myself there and I wasn't able to. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Hi, Tammy. Go ahead.
Tammy, I was just introduce Jared Montgomery.
Oh, great.
Yeah, our newest. So, okay, go ahead, Tammy, why don't you give us the rundown on that first administrative item?
Sure. So this item came before you previously for preliminary condition for preliminary approval, rather. They are now seeking a recommendation for final approval. A few things to kind of note with this one, they were initially proposing public roadways up in here. Up within this development and planning and engineering after looking at the geology report. And the geotech information, we are actually requiring that they have private roads within this development. So that roadway access off of Highway 39 in between lots nine and 10 will be private, actually, instead of public. We're looking at four shared wells within this phase one. There will be, I believe it's lots one through four that will be designated as our lots or restricted lots. And for the newer planning commissioner. Whenever we've got development that occurs that contains slopes of 25% or greater. We have that designated on the dedication plat as an R lot. And then prior to obtaining a building permit, the owner just has to go through what we call a hillside review. Those are some things to note. I know there were questions about the shared accesses. There are four shared accesses, not including that private roadway between lots nine and 10. And U dot has granted a permit for those accesses. I know there was discussion to possibly remove one of those. But in the end, correct me if I'm wrong. Share, the discussion was to leave it up to the engineers and you dot. And if they were fine with those shared accesses and the planning commission would be all right with that as well. And so the applicant has opted not to remove one of those shared accesses. So we have four shared driveways, and then we have that private roadway. Engineering has requested no access lines for lot lines on nine and 10 that about Highway 39. So they have to use that private roadway. There are a few things that need to occur prior to going to the county commission, and one is drilling each of those wells, pump testing. Making sure that they go through the. Proper meetings with engineering to ensure that we've got an escrow for any improvements that are required. And I believe the last, there were two or three other items of concern commissioners. One was fire suppression. Dave Reed, the Weber District Fire Marshal. Has required that sprinkling system sprinkler systems be installed in every structure within phase one. He's not aware that they're allowing any more hydrants along Highway 39 or any hydrants in that area. And so he will require sprinklers in each of those homes. He's working with the developer for fire suppression throughout the remaining phases, but that was a concern. The other concern was stormwater runoff across Highway 39. There were some neighbors that were concerned with that and how that may increase with development. Engineering has required some detention basins along Highway 39 to hopefully mitigate that. And then we did have a concern from the Fraternal Order of the Eagles who are right across the road. They want to make sure that they have continued access to Bingham Spring. Which is located on that property, and I believe that they are working. With the developer to make sure that they have a perpetual easement to be able to maintain and access that spring. So those were some items that were brought up. Do you have any questions for me?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay.
Great. Okay, thank you, Tammy. Okay, Scott, now you're up.
Appreciate it. So we've got three text amendments or legislative items on the agenda. We'll start with 3.1. This came to you guys a couple weeks back. As an adjustment primarily to the Western Weaver manufacturing areas. So the M1, M2, and M3 zones, but there is a small amount of manufacturing, the MB1 zone up in the valley. That is slightly adjusted with this text amendments. We wanted to make sure you guys were aware of it and get your. Your comments and also to hold a public hearing with the Ogden Valley. With those adjustments. Last time we looked at this, there were a couple of adjustments. To the use tables, the biggest of which is changing them from being alphabetical. With a list of uses A through Z to a set of tables that takes manufacturing from. The beginning of the manufacturing process where we're extracting raw materials. And then moving forward through refinement and the process into a final product. So we have several different tables where we've taken those uses and put them into the timeline of manufacturing. And the biggest reason why we were undertaking this adjustment was to accommodate for a potential food manufacturer in the Western Weaver manufacturing area. We had some concerns about bottling up some smelly stuff in their their food products. And so we wanted to make some adjustments to try to make those manufacturing zones more. Available for those types of uses. So the one thing that we looked at last time. With regards to the MB1 zone that affects the Ogden Valley. Is there's a couple of new uses added into the table to address that timeline of raw material, the finished product. And so we wanted to look at those uses with you just to make sure you were aware of those. But the the main focus for the MB1 zone was to try to leave it unchanged as much as possible. But we'll go through that use tables to make sure you guys are up to speed on what all is in those use tables. But by and large, the rest of the adjustments are primarily for Western Weaver. Is there any questions on that particular text amendment?
Let's be the time if I had a concern on one of. Something on the charts that has been marked as not not committed.
Sure.
Done right at the top and animal feeding operating. For operation. So in AB3. And this isn't the large one, but just the regular one.
So Commissioner Francis, this is another item. So that the item we are looking at is the second legislative item. We can definitely get to that. You're looking at the large concentrated animal feeding operation item, which is. That is item 3.2. Any other questions on the manufacturing edits? One clarification also while we're on the topic, you'll notice on the staff reports for both item 3.1, so the manufacturing edits. And then also item 3.3, which is addressing the transfer development rights for accessory dwelling units. We, as we've been working on several different text amendment processes, there's another small administrative item. That has to do with the definition of a lot of record. That we've kind of been wondering where we put this particular text. I did put it with the manufacturing that it's a good, we put it with this. Set of edits for. Transfer development rates and. You'll notice in the header, the application request on both of those staff reports are actually labeling it or listing it in both of those. Those file numbers. And that's not necessarily the intention. We just wanted to go forward on one or the other of them. So we can pull it out of one and leave it in one. Just FYI, we'll talk about that when we get into.
Okay, I'm sorry. I guess I'm confused because. It's 3.2 on the agenda, so that's for the regulated animal feeding operations.
That's right.
And so.
To pack it out of order.
But isn't that chart with 3.2?
You can see the December 7th minutes. They are here.
They nailed to this. Because that where you have the different categories like fur farm, hog farm. Animal feeding. Okay. Well, it's not 3.2. It's 3.1 is the manufacturing. Okay. I thought they said 3.2.
Yeah, I think maybe the agenda isn't quite lining up with the packet order.
Okay, sorry.
No, you're fine. Thanks for clarifying.
I did have a question on those two though.
Sure.
So on the first thing, edits to the application requirement, is that what you're talking about?
The application requests at the top of the staff report.
Maybe I'm on 2.1 now. Yes. Edits to the application requirements for zoning procedures. My thing. These are the different edits to the manufacturing. Says to a large, this edit is proposed to allow large scale projects. And I just wanted to know what the definition of large scale would be then.
Gotcha. Now, so what you're referring to is. An adjustment to the application requirements for somebody to apply for a reason. In this, in this particular item, so this is item 3.1. On the agenda. So this is, this is part of the manufacturing zoning edits. There's a section in the proposal where we are looking at the, so this is page two on the staff report towards the top where it says edits to the application requirements for zoning procedures. So the intention here is when we have a large development, we haven't defined the scale of a large development. But when we have a development that comes in that is. Large enough where they they can't just simply hook up to the existing infrastructure. There's not a service provider. There may not be a district and may not be the ability to just turn key and develop. So a lot of times you have to set up water districts or sewer districts or connect bigger pieces of infrastructure before they move forward. When they're looking at purchasing a large piece of property and trying to determine feasibility, one of those feasibility, you know, checkmarks is can be zoned appropriate for for the project. And so in our application requirements, they need to submit to us a real serve letter for water, sewer, and those types of things. A lot of times there's not an entity that can even draft a letter or it's available in the area. So we're doing in this edit is saying, instead of a real serve letter, they can submit. Narrative describing how it would be feasible to establish a district or set up those utilities. So that if the reason is approved and then a development agreement is associated with it for that large scale project to move forward. We would then be able to work on that larger piece of infrastructure. Makes sense. So if you look in the staff report further in the exhibit, the actual red line of this proposal. Six. Yeah. Give me just a second. Yeah, my apologies. It looks like that that particular piece of language got pulled out of the exhibit. Looked to see if I can find it digitally and I can share my screen so we can go through the language. With the cluster subdivision lot development standards. Yeah, the design review requirements.
Must to be waived or modified? Does that mean just temporarily in the beginning with that agreement or altogether?
So if they get to this point and they have a development agreement associated with their reason approval. We would say that having gone through a development agreement with the county commission in the zone would satisfy the designer view.
And I guess that's my question with those with that. Development agreement, would it have to go by though the requirements?
Yeah, so we would say we've already kind of hashed out all the design and the site plan and all the, you know, typical things we review during a design review. As part of the development. And so instead of having them go through development agreement to just turn around and go back to the designer view.
Just wanted to make sure they didn't. Still have to abide by those.
Yep. Is there any other questions on the manufacturing edits? Here's ready, we'll move on to the. Large concentrated animal feed operations. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, on, I think this is in that one. If you have a chart in that one about. The second one down or under D contractors, equipment, storage yard or rental equipment used by contract contractors indoor or outdoors. You made that. In the MB1, that's a permitted use. I'm just wondering if that could still be. Conditional. I just remember we had, I think with Mr. Tom Summers that came in and one of the neighbors was very concerned. And so if there were some. Restrictions that might be necessary to put on something like that if it were.
The problem, the problem with that is a lot of people have small businesses and they don't, they operate out of their home and that's where they keep their equipment. And so I think that, you know, Tom's one of them, you know? So I, I don't think the way that it is is probably fine. I mean, if they're, if they're parking 50 trucks there, that's different, but.
So keep in mind, this is in the manufacturing MB1 zone, Tom Summers, I believe was in AB3. So this MB1 edit would allow for contractor storage yards. It's actually already permitted in the current use tables. We're just leaving it the same. But if you guys, you know, this is a chance to change something if you'd like to.
I just, where maybe that it buffs up to a commercial like we have in in the center of Newtown Eden. I just wondering if it might be appropriate to have, just have a review process on that.
Wasn't this referring to that project that was in West or that there was something in West Weaver that was on that and somebody was trying to park their equipment there?
No, this didn't stem from that. At least the idea here is the existing MB1 zoning use table has contractor storage yard as a permitted use. We're just saying we're not going to touch it as part of this edit. But if you're concerned about it and want to make the recommendation to adjust it.
On it.
And chat about large KFOs real quick, concentrated animal feeding operations. Okay, so this particular text amendment was kind of spurred on by the state legislature in the last session. They gave us until February 1st to address the citing of new large concentrated animal feeding operations. And the definition of which is quite large in scales. We're talking 700 dairy cows, 1,000 cattle. That goes into pigs and chickens and all sorts of stuff, but it's in the thousands of. As far as quantity is concerned. So there's two trains of thought. We came to you guys and kind of talked about the first train of thought, which was there's really no location. In Weaver County that we feel like is an appropriate year round, full time, large concentrated animal feeding operation. We could cite in Newland. We have existing ones and those ones would be allowed to continue to operate as non-conforming uses until they decide to either. Reduce their footprint or move or whatever in the future. But the the first scenario that you'll see in the staff report. Is, you know, a scenario which we could say there's none of the large animal feeding operations. Existing ones can continue to remain. The Western Weaver Planning Commission had made an alternative recommendation with a different scenario. Where they would like to see the ability for any new large concentrated animal feeding operations. To be located in either the A3 or M3 zones out in West Weaver as a conditional use. And then the existing ones in other zones would be about to continue as non-conforming uses. We've had some discussion with the county commission, Western Weaver, we've had work session with Ogden Valley as well. The county commission and speaking with them, their their thoughts are maybe we would lean towards this scenario to. Option where we would conditionally allow them in E3 and in 3 zones. But they'd like to see maybe a buffer requirement, but if any new operation would have come in that they have a buffer between. So that's, that's what we will be taking to them on Tuesday next week, which should be the deadline to adopt. A potential large KFO regulation.
What was the definition of large scale again? Was it 700? Is that what you said?
So. Actual state definition. And our proposal would be to adopt that definition. So the state's definition, definition of a large KFO is 700 mature dairy cows. 1,000 veal calves, 1,000 cattle, other than dairy cows. 2,500 swine weighing each weighing 55 pounds or more. 10,000 swine each weighing less than 55 pounds, 500 horses, 10,000 cheaper lambs, 55,000 turkeys, 30,000 laying hens or broilers. 125,000 chickens. 82,000 laying hens, 30,000 ducks. Depending on if they have a particular venator system and then 5,000 ducks if they don't have. Newer handling system is what it's called. So pretty large, you know, as far as it's concerned. Is there any, any questions on that? The recommendation is is that we look at it. We do need to have a public hearing on it tonight as well. As all three of these text amendments. But is there any questions on what's proposed?
I did have a question, just not on the large one, but on the animal feeding operation. That. They are not allowed into AB3. That's a little, I was thinking of a scenario unless I not read it correctly. Since we have Carver's Coke up in Eden where she keeps animals. Her barn and little stalls and things. It would be over 40 days, 45 days of the year. And so would that not be allowed then?
So if it doesn't meet the definition of a large concentrated animal feeding operation, then we would say that it would default back down to maybe an animal feeding operation. So it would still be concentrated. You'd still be supplemental, supplementarily feeding those animals during off months or even during regular. Grazing months and those would be allowed in. Which page are you looking at? Exhibit B. Use table for the AB3. So animal, yeah, animal grazing would be a permitted use in the AB3. And the animal grazing is where you have enough land to support the grazing of those animals without the land being overwhelmed. Excellent. Excellent. So yeah, you're on the next page. So an animal feeding operation, let's, let's actually look at definitions for on the same page as far as what that means. Yeah. So if you turn back just a couple of pages. There's the definition section. An animal feeding operation means a lot or facility where the following conditions are met. A animals have been, are, will be stable, they're confined and fed, will maintain for a total of 45 days or more in any 12 month period. And the area of confinement devoted to the feeding of the animals does not sustain grazing vegetation during the moment during season for the purpose of feeding. So really, the only difference between a large concentrated feeding operation. And this animal feeding operation is simply you haven't met those thresholds of animals, the quantity of animals. So it's still concentrated, still can be pretty big, but it's not played at that large concentrated. So in the Ogden Valley, the proposed land use table for. The animal feeding operation would be not permitted in the AB3. So if you're in the AB3 zone, you need to have an animal grazing operation where you have enough land where you can at least locate your animals and keep your land able to sustain those animals. Without confining them indefinitely in one area and supplementally feeding them.
So there's no, even if you have six animals?
No, you can do that if you have enough land for those six animals to graze.
If you're currently doing it, you're okay.
That's right. If it's a grandfather legal operation.
I'm just concerned that with the master plan, with the agricultural that will support that. And if somebody wants to come up there and they have three acres and they want to maybe buy four, maybe they want to even have five or six horses. That's not, they are not going to sustain those horses. They would have to have them have stalls or feeding areas that they do supplement, maybe even in the summer. So I'm concerned that this.
So you'd still be able to stable those animals. But the question is, are you able to sustain them with the food that's built or that's grown on site?
Would like to still have animals and give them supplement for feeding even in the summer if necessary, because the ground would be support that. I'm really concerned about that for the valley, for valley residents, because like our animals and.
If that's a concern, we can look at maybe making a conditional use of them, looking at maybe establishing some. Other remedies. The concern is that you have, you know, if you have too many horses and you're not able to sustain them, you're constantly bringing them feed. They're constantly contained within a single area. You start having issues with smells and water quality and those types of things.
Yeah.
And maybe issues.
What happens if you don't use the land? Maybe you have the land, but you're not using it to feed them. By installing stalls yet on the giant horse arena.
And you just leave them, you know, contained in a single area? That's, you know, that's in the current definitions, it would be a concentrated feeding operation because you're keeping those animals in one contained area and supplementing them. So it's, it's a different type of use. So it's, that's a different type of use. So we still allow for. So on exhibit B. We're going to be on page one, two, three, four of exhibit B. Towards the top of the the table there. So we allow for stable for horses, non-commercial. So horses shall be for non-commercial use only. No more than two horses shall be kept for each one half acre of land used for the horses. So it's there's still a function of area associated with the quantity of horses in that regard. But it's it's slightly separated out from the concentrated feeding operation or an animal feeding operation. Scott is a letter of current regulation. That is the current language.
Okay, thanks Scott. All right, let's go ahead and get started. Our welcome everybody to the Ogden Valley Planning Commission for January twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. Let's go ahead and do our pledge of allegiance. Hey, so for roll call. Francis, Commissioner Howell, Commissioner Foreman, Commissioner Burton. Our newest commissioner, Commissioner. Okay, so first of all, has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes for November thirtieth and December seventh? Any changes or corrections? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as stated.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Any discussion? Favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, minutes approved. Okay, we're going to go ahead and go to administrative items. Tammy, I understand you're going to be presenting U V G zero six two 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 one. Is that right?
That is correct, Commissioner. Let me, let me share my screen here real quick. I feel like I'm cursed every time I present, something goes wrong. We'll find out here. Okay, can everybody see that? Okay? Can everyone see my screen all right?
Yes.
You can't?
Yes.
You can. Okay, all right, sorry. I think there may be a little issue with the volume. So if you recall, this subdivision came before you. Late later last year for preliminary approval, this is Gateway Estates Phase One located. East of Huntsville or on the eastern part of Huntsville along Highway thirty nine. This subdivision. The the proposal so far consists of three phases. You can see phase one runs along Highway thirty nine here. And then you've got phase two to the west and phase three is to the north and east here. Just to kind of give you a little bit of a close up of some of these lots to kind of. Let you know what's going on. First of all, these are all. Phase one is still located within the F five zone. Once you get north of lots one and two, then you're looking at F forty zoning, but these are all so far in the F five zone. The applicant has provided some building pads as well as well locations. So a few things, let me just kind of show you the rest of these lots here. You can see their frontage along Highway thirty nine. The applicant is proposing again for shared accesses. So that we don't have ten, eight or ten accesses off of Highway thirty nine. U dot and county engineering have both granted approval of what the applicant is proposing. You can see lots four through ten here. Initially, when this came before you for preliminary, the applicant was proposing. A couple of public roadways. In fact, if we go up here. This entire road here was going to be public and then it was going to be private up to the north. That has changed since preliminary. When planning and engineering took a closer look at the geology and geotech information that was submitted to us. We decided that we would rather have private roadways through there. So this will be a subdivision with private roadways. Whenever we require private roadways, there's documentation that's recorded that allows the county to. Convert it to a public roadway when we feel it's necessary, when we've got neighboring development to the west or the east. That may would likely be a trigger for those to go public at some point. But it certainly isn't always required. We look at these on a case by case basis oftentimes. So just to kind of let you know, this is a little snapshot of the slopes going through here. On the dedication plat, lots one through four are designated as our lots or restricted lots. That simply means that that these have slopes of twenty five percent or greater. So they would go through an additional review process prior to obtaining a building permit. And they'll be noted lot one R, lot two R, and so forth on the final dedication plat. A few things to note and some of these address some concerns that were brought up with preliminary, but I'll just kind of go through these. We've talked about private roadways, county engineering in the Weaver Fire District. Would like to see grades of no more than twelve percent on these roadways through the subdivision. It'd be challenging, but the developer has indicated they'll they'll do their best to work with them with that. I know there was concern regarding stormwater runoff coming across Highway thirty nine, how that might increase with development. And affect their neighbors across the road. County engineering has required detention basins on the north side of Highway thirty nine. To catch much of that and to hopefully slow that down. And they'll keep an eye on on those basins and that that stormwater as development occurs, but they have required that. And they feel that what the applicant is proposing as far as how to mitigate that. Should suffice, but again, they'll continue to look at that as we go through the development process. The shared accesses have been approved by U dot. U dot has granted permits for those actually. They've also requested an additional ten feet of road dedication to U dot along Highway thirty nine. So I'm not, what I'm unsure of is whether or not they are, this is in anticipation of. You know, an additional lane. I know there was talk about a turn lane at some point down the road. I'm not sure, but. They have required some additional roadway dedication. Per the fire district where hydrants are not located along Highway thirty nine, nor will you dot allow them to be. The fire district is requiring. That each structure be or each home have a sprinkler system within it. They they've indicated they'd like to see a note on the plat. Or something like that so that 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 item is not missed when building permit applications are submitted. Well permits have been obtained. So when this came before you for preliminary, they had, they were granted the. The water shares from Weaver Basin. Now they've gone through the process with the state and obtained. Approved start cards. What they will have to do prior to going before the county commission is they will have to drill and pump test each of these wells. And they're doing shared wells in phase one, and I'm sure that this pattern will continue, just given the challenging topography. I'm sure they'll have shared wells throughout. Even though there will only be four wells, they still have to have that acre foot of water for each lot. So they'll be distributing ten acre feet of water through those four shared wells. That has to occur before they can report the subdivision. So and with that, the applicant is proposing to use the remaining half acre foot of water for landscaping. And so there will be a restricted landscaping covenant that's recorded with the final plat. That just lets future homeowners know that their their landscaping is limited to the amount of water that. Has been provided from Weaver Basin. Let me see if there's, these are some of the preliminary conditions that. We've made sure to be addressed and approved plan with Weaver Fire District. They're actually working with Weaver Fire District. For a fire suppression plan for phases two and three as well. But the fire district has approved those sprinkled homes in phase one. And again, U dot has granted their access for those for those four shared driveways. And then they'll use, just to go up here for lots nine and ten. They will use this private driveway. County engineering has requested that this be labeled a no access line for lots nine and ten. To make sure that this is the the access used for both of these lots. Again, well permits, accesses and roadways will have to comply with safety and design standards. We'll go through that. With the developers, they go through further pre-construction meetings and such with engineering. And then in order to get their final approval from the county commission, these are listed in the staff report. We've gone through some of these. A lot of these are covenants that have to do with septic systems. And an alternative access covenant, a landscape restricted covenant, private road dedication documents that allow. That road to be become a public road when the county feels it's necessary. And I think that's it. Staff feels that that the developer, the applicant has addressed all preliminary concerns. And that they've met their conditions to. Receive a recommendation for final approval. Do you have any questions for me right now? Commissioners, I'm going to apologize if anyone's talking. I cannot hear it for some reason.
Okay, the last chance.
Bring up one further item, Commissioner Lewis. I just wanted to mention that I did receive communication. From the Fraternal Order of the Eagles. They were concerned and they, this was brought up, I think it was brought up in preliminary or shortly after. Preliminary approval was granted. They have access and have had a prescriptive access, I guess, to a to a spring, to Bingham Spring. Located on this property. They would like to make sure that they have continued access to that so they can maintain that. That spring and I believe that they are working with the developer, but I want to make sure that that is on the record for this meeting. That was a concern that was forwarded to me.
Sounds reasonable.
Would that be good to put in the motion also? Mandation?
That could certainly be added as a condition.
Thank you.
Okay, Tammy, thank you for that presentation. Sounds like someone would like to address that, maybe the petitioner. I'm sorry, could you state your name and your address?
My address is thirty three nineteen Basin View Circle in Mountain Green. I'm one of the owners on that, on this, on this. Proposed plan. We just got an email today from their attorney from the, I think it's called the FOE fraternal. Group up there. And and as far as I don't have any information, I have to to study it. They're saying that they they want a perspective. Or an easement. They don't currently have one. And so we we're addressing and looking at what they they want access so they can go in and clean out the the. The spring or the creek to make sure that, but they currently do not have any access to that. It's just a proposed easement that they're requesting.
Excuse me, that is a prescriptive easement, no, correct? Planner ate a lot?
Yes, Commissioner, the the Fraternal Order of the Eagles has indicated that they currently have a prescriptive easement. They just want to make sure that that easement is not interrupted and that that flow of water from that spring that supports their. Their land across Highway thirty nine is not interrupted.
Yeah, okay, well, prescriptive or not prescriptive, that's kind of a civil. Issue. They'll have to work out themselves, I think. Anybody else have any comments for this? Corlin, do we weigh into easements or prescriptive easements or anything like that?
In a situation like this, where an adjacent property owner is claiming some kind of right there. That would be, as you stated, for them to determine how to try to protect that right. And it would it would not be something that we would typically get involved in.
Yeah, I would say we wish them the best and hopefully work it out amongst themselves, but that's not really our. So, okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion. All right. Well, he can put a motion together like no one else, huh? All right, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing done, all those approved? Motion carry. When opposed, right, motion carries.
Just a reminder to speak into the mic so we can catch it. Okay, thank you. I'll try to remember.
Okay. We'll move on to item three point one Z T A twenty twenty one dash eight. Those be, the next three actually will be presented by Scott lawyers. Thank you, commissioners. Okay, this first item, item three point one Z T A twenty twenty one zero eight. Is a text amendment, the county initiated text amendment to adjust the manufacturing zones. Their zoning ordinance is in the county. The promote, the primary intention here is to adjust the zones out west, so M one into an M three. To facilitate large scale food manufacturing as a use. That is is interested out west. There is however, a small manufacturing zone up in the valley and B one that has some minor implications in this proposed text amendment. And so we do need to bring it to you for review and public hearing today. For a recommendation of the county commission when you're in the control. So the proposal is to adjust, you know, various uses and use tables of the M zones. To. To differentiate the manufacturing uses from when we're taking raw materials to. Finish products with a primary focus on making sure that any food manufacturing operations. Are able to operate in the manufacturing zones without too much concern about having adjacent. Noxious smells or orders of fumes or particulates making their way into their manufactured product. With regards to the MB one zone, we have tried our best to keep those uses untouched. So unchanged from today's uses in the MB one tables. However, there are a couple of minor adjustments that we've made in order to facilitate the separation of uses from an alphabetical list to. Passifications of uses in the in the manufacturing process. The thing I think mostly we want to focus on is looking at those uses in the MB one table. And making sure you're okay with what's proposed. So if you'd like. Jump into the use tables and you can address those real quick. I'm going to share my screens. We're on the same page. And so our packets can be in the same order here. And we'll come back to some of these administrative edits if you have any questions on those. So the first tables here is what is being repealed. So let's get past that and take a look at what's proposed. In the header paragraph to the use tables, what we're trying to do is trying to help people understand that. in, in the manufacturing zoning tables, the uses in the commercial zones are allowed to waterfall down into the manufacturing zones. So out west in the sea freeze zone, the uses in the freeze zone can, can waterfall down into the M one zone as permitted or conditional permitted uses. But up in the valley, we're clarifying that the uses in the CB two zones can waterfall down into the MB one zone as well. Similar to out west, but that all uses in the table are to be considered as indoor unless explicitly stated otherwise. So we want to make sure that everybody understands that if it's listed in the table, it's indoor use unless we say it's intended for outdoor use. And this edit came from, again, that food manufacturing concern that some of the uses can be quite obnoxious if we're trying to, you know, manufacture clean food products. It also indicates that anybody who is manufacturing a product that does have the potential of resulting in orders, dust, fumes. So if you are manufacturing something that makes these potentially concerning byproducts. You guys read that? And so if any of these are a byproduct of your processing, then you would need to provide mechanisms by installing or otherwise insulation, otherwise it would keep those airborne contaminants from leaving the site. So that's in the header paragraph, just trying to clarify, once we get into the uses, you know, if it's, if it's if it's labeled as, as just a use, it's indoor unless we're saying otherwise, and it would be outdoor. And if you're making any messes, it can go up into the air, that needs to continue inside. So looking at the list of tables, with the table uses. What you see on the left, so the left most column that says MB one and it's crossed out. This is a formatting issue we're having with our, our qualifying software, so Muni code. What we've done is we've just stricken that whole column, who's giving us formatting issues. We've said, okay, let's just start fresh and put a new column next to it. So the second to the left here is what is proposed. What is on the right hand side, that'll be one will be stricken, so don't even pay any attention to that. Okay, I'll just run down the uses here real quick, identifying anything that may have changed from the current uses that are either allowed or not allowed. So flipping over the page, everything on this first list is mean consistent. On the second page, under animal related uses. We have found that in the MB one zone, in animal hospital is currently a permitted use. But both a kennel and a veterinarian are not permitted. We thought that that was a little bit at odds with itself, so. Where a kennel was previously not permitted, we're proposing that it be permitted. And where a veterinarian or small animal grooming operation was previously not permitted, we're proposing it be permitted. So that's a, a small adjustment there. The other adjustment, you'll see, large concentrated animal operation, that would be not permitted, obviously. Any questions or concerns about proposal? There is only one manufacturing zone, it's the M one zone. It consists of eight acres just below the Smo Chris Junior High. Yeah, that's it. Yep, that's why we're, we're trying to be specific to just minor adjustments in the one, trying to leave it mostly untouched.
Pretty big difference between the kennel.
So keep in mind it'll be indoor. Does that change your thinking on it? And that's fine, if you guys aren't comfortable with that, we can change it. My thought process was an animal hospital, a veterinarian, that they're somewhat sane and we're probably talking about scale here. Our thought process is if it's indoor, does it make that much of an impact, maybe, maybe not? If you're thinking that it's an impactful thing, then you can, you can adjust it if you guys feel so. Like I mentioned, currently it's a, it's a non-permitted use, so.
You say no to veterinarian?
I've, I've been in situations where they'll bring in, I want to bring in, you know, hundreds of dogs to a place that's right next to a bunch of houses and it's very noisy, brings a lot of concern. That's something that's not changed.
Even an indoor kennel probably has a
This was indoor.
But maybe that was usually a, a dog run of some sort.
Where we're proposing, I don't know that we should change that, it's already.
Well, under this proposal, we would say it's permitted. We could change it to conditional. Yeah, I agree. Okay, so would you be more comfortable being conditional or just leaving it as non-permitted?
I'm leaning towards leaving it as non-permitted, however, I'd love to hear what everyone else has to say. Really doesn't affect the upper valley because it's in that small area spot up there. Oh, just in that eight acres. It's just that eight acres in the entire valley.
I have a share.
We have that more commercial eventually.
Just where our MB one is, that's again, I make the point that that's going to be close to a projected commercial. Very nice commercial center. So having kennel there, they still have to usually take the dog out and lock it. You know, and I remember someone coming in, I was in a planning permission meeting. It was, someone was applying for a conditional use for kennel. Even though it was in, indoor, they still went on and on about the noise. So I think there is a concern where just because of the location of our MB one, either non-permitted or, or conditional. Because there may come more MB one areas down the road somewhere else, but maybe we could address it then.
Just as a quick poll, commissioners, who all would like to see that as not permitted? Okay, so maybe whoever makes the motion. Sounds good, okay. Any other, any other parts of that, that?
Wasn't there one that I thought?
Conditional use permit, we still have to approve it anyway.
We're also asking for it to set up that fight where we don't have to now. To say no, though, that's Someone comes in and wants to do it. Right now, we, we, it's easy.
As long as they meet all the criteria that basically has to be.
Hi, one more. I know we do have a lot of contractors and people who work with contractors on our board, but I still think because of where our MB one is that contractors, equipment storage yard, the rental of equipment should be a conditional use and not a permitted use. To make sure that when they bring it in, that it won't be taken away from the commercial idea that's next door.
Current, it's currently are conditional.
Don't even look at that left-hand column, it has nothing to do with what's proposed or what was existing. It's actually more distracting than anything. It was a formatting issue, so don't even, there's no bearing there.
So is it, is it?
It's currently a permitted use.
Okay.
So just saying we're not going to touch it.
It's currently permitted, you're saying? Saying you'd like to see it currently, or you'd like to see it?
Sure, take it, or move it to conditional use.
I'll give you my two cents on what you said, so I feel like you can have a clean garden area, so I'm not totally opposed to conditional, however, Jared, what's your thoughts? Is it fair? I mean, to be able to get like conditioned to put your equipment outside, is that fair? So you would think that conditioning is fair.
So also keep in mind, the, the county's equipment yard is in that same area, so we already have an existing use. Think about.
Well, again, they're going to show you a plan. You almost can't tell them no, but so no one's going to get screwed here, but at least they kind of have to show up and give us a reasonable plan.
I would agree with Commissioner Francis, we should look at conditional, just so that we can at least ask him to keep it clean, you know, that's fair. And I have heard people complain, the residents about the county's yard. I know they're willing to do that.
See, we'd like to talk to you after this meeting, Rick.
We are possibly looking at some relocation.
We'll have Iris give you a call. Any other comments on those parts?
Down on page twenty-two. Hold, hold on, let's go through, there's a couple I just want to mention before we jump back and forth, if that's okay. So just below contractors, equipment, storage yard, gas station. So a gas station is not currently defined as such under the current code. We have a service station. And a service station is a not permitted use in the MB one zone, but it is a permitted use in the CB two zone. So keep in mind, CB two waterfalls down into MB one. So what we're saying is since it's permitted in the CB two zone, we would say it would be permitted in, in the MB one. So this line item, gas station at the top of the page there, that's a new use that we're adding into the table. But it differs slightly from what the current language would, would indicate. It's having concerns with that water falling down into MB one. So the Maverick Station, for example, is in MB two. Or sorry, CB two, and that use waterfalls down into MB one. That makes sense. You guys have any concerns about that? That's a verification I wanted to make before we I don't know if we'd ever have a gas station down there, but in that eight acres. Trying to be consistent with what's in the current CB two zone. Just, just so I understand this left column. With the red marks, that's what it is now. Not at all. Don't even look at that. So the reason why it's in here is because we've, we've had some formatting issues. It's an online software.
Why is it there?
So pretend it doesn't even exist. It doesn't mean anything about what currently exists. It's not a proposal. We're just we had to, to remove it, we had to strike it, but it wouldn't remove it out of the table for a formatted reason, so we just created a new column to the right and started over.
Comments or questions about the first call?
Yeah, just nothing, nothing there to consider.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. There wasn't anything on page twenty. That was fast with Commissioner Burton, this may be where your next question came in. So the alcohol distillery is that next page. So under the current MB one use tables, there is no such thing as an alcohol distillery defined as a use. But we do have a brewery. And so when we were talking about out west and the M zones out west, an alcohol distillery was one of those things we wanted to put on the use list. And then say, okay, these are not, these are okay out west. So because a brewery is permitted currently in the MB one zone, we thought that an alcohol distillery would also make sense. So that's a new use in the table to bring to your attention, so we're labeling it as permitted.
There's already one up there, so it had to have been a conditionally, right?
No, I'm, I'm curious, do you guys know how long that's been there?
Not very long, what, eight years, six years, five years?
I wonder if it's in the CB zone. Is it in the CB two zone? So that water falls into the MB one. So we're just, we're clarifying in the MB one zone of the distillery would be a permitted use similar to a brewery.
I'm just curious on the bakery goods manufacturing, which just why is that not?
What we're saying, if you look a little bit further down, food products, small batch artisan is permitted. And we're also, if you look even further down, we're saying you can make stuff on site, you can package it on site, but it can't be too big as far as scale in the MB one zone.
That's one of Pillsbury plant, right?
Yeah, because we're saying there's a little bit of a size there.
So could that be interpreted to permit food products, small batch artisan? Excluding bakery products because it's prohibited.
You mean the bakery goods manufacturing?
Well, the, the general is you can do food products, small batch artisan. But also you listed specifically, you can't do bakery products.
Manufacturing.
So that would be the specific would be excluded from the game.
I don't believe so.
Because I'm, I'm, I could see a boutique in the new commercial area where they made and sold cinnamon rolls, you know, they walk around and go get cinnamon roll. Would that be under, under bakery goods? I guess that would be in the
Food for human consumption, bakery goods, I'm guessing, is more like flour.
Yeah, what's interesting about these use tables is we are aware that we need to do some more work on these. We know that there's a question of quantity. That was actually brought up as a comment by the Western Republican Commission. Because we've, what we've done so far is we've separated these tables into classifications or groupings of of manufacturing based on time, and so raw product, finished product, product and then a spectrum in between. What we need to do as we move forward, and this is kind of on our, our to-do list, is to then look at quantities. Because it may be okay to manufacture a certain amount of a certain product in like the M one and M two zone, but once you get to a certain scale, we should probably keep that out in the M three zone. So that's something that we, we still need to address and it's kind of a bigger head scratcher. I think with this bakery goods manufacturing, the intent here is scale. So the bakery goods manufacturing, we would say it's not permitted because we believe that to be a bigger scale, but then the food products, small batch artisan, we think would be it. I, I would agree, though, that that's
It's ambiguous.
It's ambiguous, it needs a definition or some kind of clarifying language because otherwise I agree that it would be something somebody would look at and say, well, does that, yeah, does that exclude bakery goods or what? Yeah, yeah. Maybe what we can do on the special provisions, we can make it specific to MB one and just say that it can't exceed a certain number of square feet on the facility or Okay, maybe, maybe we'll scratch our heads and we'll take that to the commissioners. Do you guys have a recommendation on size that you think could be applicable or appropriate?
Can, you know, large scale manufacturing, like you have cookie factory down at
Do you think it's more a function of facility size and square footage, or do you think it's a function of traffic or maybe both? Do you think it's maybe as long as they have a storefront that where they can sell the products that they're making? But if they don't have a storefront, it'd be more of like a commercial manufacturing.
Economically, it'd be really difficult to put something like that up there and, you know, but then we're saying, well, let's, we want to do a specialty bake shop. Well, they would want to have.
You wouldn't, maybe square footage, I don't know.
Smaller areas, even if we add more area to it, you'd still have to build, we'd have to build buildings that you, to do it up there, you have to build a building that would be meet the code, right, which is higher expense and everything, so storefronts are a good
They're going to have a square footage cap on that, maybe.
So this is a manufacturing zone, which is less restrictive than a commercial zone.
That's kind of strange, huh?
Yeah, yeah. We could probably say there's a great harvest, the baked bread down on
We could probably say there's a Great Harvest, the baked bread down on Twenty-Fifth Street, that seems like a commercial place. There was a Continental Bakery that's now torn down, and that was a large Wonder Bread Twinkies stuff. You would expect to find in a manufacturing, but maybe not a Twenty-Fifth Street commercial. So when we're talking about manufacturing, we ought to be a far less restrictive. The default probably ought to be you can do it unless there's some health, safety, or welfare reason you can't do it.
Would it, would it make sense just to strike the small batch artisan and just leave bakery goods manufacturing? And, and we, we only have lots in certain sizes in the manufacturing zone, so we're kind of limited on their size based on the. Developability, and just say as long as it's a manufacturing, food manufacturing business, they could locate that.
It's simple.
I think that'd be the best. I, I miss the smell of the Wonder Bread. Large, I don't see it having a problem, and I think we're limited on size up there to begin with.
It's not going to be economical to put for somebody to build a large scale manufacturing plant.
Distribution is a little bit limited.
The only concern would be the noise. I think if it was too loud.
When, when we're looking, thinking of this, shouldn't, shouldn't we be also thinking of, okay, so we might only have eight acres now, but someone comes in and buys, has a hundred and forty acres somewhere and they want to rezone it? These are the same things they would be able to do, so we're coming to think, obviously it's not economical, but we're going to consider that as well, right?
I think just a thought, under today's general plan, it would be extremely challenging to, to rezone anything else to manufacturing, the general plan doesn't support any additional manufacturing area. So unless we were to amend the general plan and identify area for more manufacturing, you know, down the road, it's not necessarily a concern under today's guiding documents, but maybe down, down the line. Twenty years, if there's a new general plan that identifies that as a use.
That's, I think they could make a fairly good argument to add, is kind of my. Once that's filled up, I mean, it might not be fully filled up, now can you imagine? It'd be pretty difficult to sit here and tell everybody, no.
Well. Bakery currently permitted?
I'm not saying I.
Just, just the small batch bakery is, the larger is not. So the, that's a, this bakery goods manufacturing is an existing use listed, and it's listed as not permitted. To, I guess, put things into context, if you think thirty minutes away out in West Lea, there's space for millions of square feet of industrial manufacturing, storage warehouse, all those. So if you look at it from a slightly higher level, I don't know that you would locate a bigger operation in the valley per se, maybe a small batch, but I mean.
I mean, I guess just a front point of my argument, yeah, you're right, but look at Park City, right, Park City might have had the same argument twenty years ago, and now they've got. They've got the need for it too, right, bicycle manufacturers, trailers, all kinds of different things that you never would have thought, someone who wanted to position in Park City, but the valley has grown so much around. You know, that, you know, we, we add all these developments. We're, this isn't going to be enough manufacturing when that place is as big as it could be. I, I just a point, it's kind of me, I think we just have to make sure we're considering that.
Well. The acreage aside, from a use perspective, just in general, in the valley, do we think that. Having the small batch artisan as a separate use makes sense, or is it okay to leave it as a more broad term and just leave it as a permitted use under this bakery goods manufacturing?
Find the size, I don't know why we're just. Maybe it's a condition. If you're not going to define the difference between bakery and small batch. It's all the same.
Well, we need to, I mean, it's. I, I'm concerned about us taking our subjective likes and dislikes and imposing them on property owners and on the future that we can't see. Obviously, there's going to be a need for more commercial manufacturing up in the valley. We can say, well, I don't like manufacturing, I don't like gas stations, I don't like whatever. But when there's a need for it, then the people that own the land ought to be able to, as long as they don't negatively impact the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Fulfill that need of the community to have that operation.
So who?
Sure, this. Just as to the distinction between those two categories over in the far right column under the small batch artisan food products. Not everything there is a bakery item, so if you get rid of that row, where would that leave things that are not bakery items? That, that would, that would be my question, we need both of them, just to make sure you cover things that are not bakery goods.
That's a good, good observation.
Motion to change it to conditional for.
You know, if I had my brothers, I'd say let's prohibit things that are. Dangerous to the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and everything else is permitted.
Okay, well, who would be okay with making, leaving the small batches permitted and changing the bakery to permitted?
Could be proposed or be okay with it?
Bakeries are permitted. Okay. So let's try to do that, so bakeries, okay, anything else on that particular motion?
Okay, now that's, so this, this last thing on this page, we were talking about the packaging and distribution of food products produced onsite. Previously, it was listed as not permitted, but if we're going to allow for a bakery up there, we should probably allow them to package their, their items. So we're proposing that it be permitted as well. That's some logic for everybody.
I'm sorry, which one are you looking at?
This packaging and distribution of food products produced onsite.
So if you make Twinkies, you get to package the Twinkies and send them. Good luck paying Ogden Valley prices and. Okay, so I heard kennel, construction equipment, well, I heard kennels not permitted, perhaps. Yeah, contractor equipment could be a conditional use and bakeries are okay.
So on the packaging, what did you say?
Bakeries and the packaging of the baking goods were goods would be permitted, th- this says that, so we wouldn't be changing that, but those would be the three tweaks to what is on here now.
Now you've got packages and distribution of food products produced off-site is not permitted.
So if you were to, if you were to have just a packaging facility and truck in products and need additional packaging, that's what we're saying, and that wouldn't be permitted.
So bringing, changing, or is that current?
So under today's language, it is not permitted. Oh, sorry, sorry, you're saying the offsite, right?
I'm saying the offsite. Packaging.
Yeah, currently it's not permitted, so we're not proposing.
So if, if Enable Industries or something like that wanted to put a small facility up there and give people. Something to do, it would not be permitted.
Yeah, under today's language, so I guess again, it comes down to scale, right, maybe it's appropriate at a certain scale.
Hence my comment, permit all except for identified.
Okay, so kennels were probably a no, contractor equipment is a conditional bakery and manufacturing, or bakery and packaging is permitted. Does anybody want to make a motion somewhat to that effect?
Are there any others on this list? Were changed? I'm just looking through these on page twenty-eight.
Yeah, that's one, so page twenty-eight, there is a blank cell under track or course for off-road vehicles indoor. That's, that's left blank, but the intention there was to have it be not permitted. So a track course for off-road vehicles indoors, maybe like an indoor motocross facility or something that. That was, I don't know why that was left blank, but the intention there would be not.
Okay, so that would be a fourth adjustment to the way it's currently.
And there is a new use under the transportation section, the parking structure. So right now, we address parking lots, outdoor parking lots, we added this use for, you know, the M zones out west. So the parking, parking lot outdoor, that was already permitted, we're still leaving it permitted, parking structure is a new use, and we're saying that it would be a permitted use in the M zones. You guys okay with having a parking structure there? Maybe it's a park and ride, or maybe it's, you know, something associated with a higher density in the future of the village area. And manufacturing zone. It's paid parking, perhaps?
Any other changes?
On the use table, there's a couple administrative changes that we had talked about previously, we talked about temporary. Mixing plants or mixing facility temporary, we had talked about the storage capacity not being adequate, we were seeing forty yards. And you guys were saying that maybe that wouldn't, wouldn't be enough, what we've added in the language is that they could ask for more through the conditional use permit, so we just need to communicate that. Any other questions on the use tables?
Yeah.
That's a good question, so under. Oftentimes, the spectators falls in, when you bring cheers and things like that. Yeah, so the existing use table only talks about the tracker trails for motorcycle and off-road vehicle, that doesn't dictate indoor or outdoor. When we were putting the tables together, we're thinking about out west, in the larger manufacturing zones. And we needed to indicate whether it was indoor or it was outdoor for the protection of those food manufacturing businesses, so we separated the uses, it's kind of ridiculous to say there's no, no spectators. But it was from, from that initial concern about food processing, so you'll notice that none of them are permitted uses in the MB one zone, so this in fact, yeah, I can value those more of a consideration for those western manufacturing uses.
Some of this question. Drag it out, you know, we're looking at parking, we're talking about parking, right, we keep hitting the source that the, the MB one's a small area. But we're trying to identify what we can have in the MB one, and then we're saying, just put parking instead of manufacturing. So it's kind of like we're saying, hey, we only want these certain things, we're only going to give you so much land to do it in. Then we'll just kind of let you do whatever, you know, parking is commercial. We won't let you do it, something else, so it's kind of like. Talking out both sides, saying, well, it's really small, but yet, we're only, we're going to control it to what we want, then we're going to kind of let all things be manufacturing, but we only have so much manufacturing. Kind of, kind of silly.
I think if we were to, you know, identify additional need for manufacturing and start looking into rezoning properties, we'd probably adjust the, the text to be closely associated with it.
Oh, final question, page twenty-nine, what's a truck service station?
So a truck service station. Under transportation? Yeah, I see that towards the bottom of the table there. Although, I don't know that we've provided a definition of that, but it would be kind of like a. In my mind, it would be something similar to like a truck stop, or like a logistics center. But you'll notice it's, it's not a permitted use, so that was more of a consideration as far as a use out west.
Usually out west has been for like semi-trucks. Well, it's, it's unclear to me, because what's a truck? Right, and, and what's a service station, service station where we used to get gas, now it's a gas station?
Right, it's all changed throughout time, and so that's where we have to go in periodically and revise the use table, what we're doing right now, because sometimes it doesn't make sense to have some of the. It's similar enough to interpretation.
If it's working on trucks, Sterling works on trucks all the time. And they're, are they in MB one or? No, but he comes down into the MB one, the waterfalls down, so I just suggest it's helpful if you have to find these things in the new MB ones. Yeah, so that somebody didn't come in here and say, hey, Sterling's working on some guys pick up. It's better to have it spelled out in the definitions section. Commercial truck stop is what we're talking about.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we table this, this, or.
We need to have a public hearing. We haven't noticed there's a public hearing.
So none of these have motions?
No, they, they would need a motion, before we can make a motion, we need to close the public hearing and close the.
Oh, I see, okay, I'll go ahead and. Accept a motion to open a public hearing. Okay, all's in favor? Okay, is there anybody online or here in the audience that would like to speak to this? Would not appear so, go ahead and accept a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, all's in favor? Close, okay, now I will accept a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to table this public hearing to discuss and take action with counties in order to amend various sections, county zoning orders to justify and clarify permitted conditions. Site dump standards in manufacturing zones to include general administrative and clerical amendments, along with county mission proposals to amend unified land use codes of record. I'd like to make a motion to table it until we can get better clarification on these and some of these updated so that we.
Can I make a quick clarification if you're okay with that? The last sentence there in that, that request for the proposal to amend land use codes definition of a lot of record. We're going to include that language in another discussion on a separate item in, in today's agenda, so we could pull that out of the motion.
This is another part of it needs to be changed before we can do anything.
Well, that we would actually be pulling it out, period, and putting it into a different item to be considered tonight. So it's, it's already, it's already in another proposal on our agenda to review. It was a simple error of not pulling out of this one, that's included in the other item on our agenda, but if it's in the motion to table that particular discussion, then. We would need to rethink that if we consider it on a different item. On another item on our agenda tonight. Yes, we didn't get to that piece, no.
So you're suggesting that the mo, that this sentence here, along with a county initiated proposal to amend the unified land use codes definition of a lot of. Definition of a lot of record should be stricken here, and then the motion's fine.
That's right, because we, I'd like to discuss it as part of a different item that we have on our agenda. It was included on this particular. This particular set of language erroneously. So we have included it on a different item in our agenda, I'd like to talk about that later if possible. So we can strike that from the motion about the, the manufacturing text amendments and then consider it as part of a different.
Okay, well, first I need a second.
Second.
Okay, so discussion, we could table this? Or we could accept it with the kennel, the contractor and the bakery changed? Is there, are there other questions besides those three things? Don't you have?
Clear, I mean, just the fact that we have to strip some of the request off of it tells me that this is not really ready to even. Part of my, it's part of my argument, it's like, well, it looks like we're not there. We've got columns that make no sense, we've got like stuff in here that's not completed. And I feel like we're rushing it. We've got so many items to change.
Okay, any other comment?
I'm comfortable with moving ahead, making the notes now to discuss.
I, I have found in the past that it's a tough job to get all these things through. And it's, it's really easy to table, it's really easy to just pull back, so as much as you can to try not to, but sometimes you have to. It's a judgment call, but it's, you know, they've done usually a really good job of just trying to get it close and then get it right once we're done. Anyway, I'm sorry.
It just seems to me that tabling would give an opportunity, I don't know how much the staff has looked at this, like the definition of. Whatever, truck service station, no, the opportunity is here to do some clarification, remove ambiguities. That will pay off in the future. We're always better if we're clear.
I agree, so one, one thing to interject here, so when we first put together this proposal, it was under haste, to be quite honest. We had a proposal to come out west with a business looking to site in the M two zone. And they had asked for very specific changes to allow for food manufacturing operation to be located at West. And so we took what was existing, which needs a lot of work, we totally agree, there's a lot of ambiguity, there's not even consistencies and. Consistencies and things that we can make more clear. What our intention was, was to adjust the tables to allow for that food manufacturing business to come in and feel secure. That they weren't going to have a detrimental use located right next to them. So we went in and tried to make those changes, one of the things that they were concerned about, they're looking at a, you know, something that was over a hundred acres in size. So the definition of a lot of record was something that they were concerned about. Because our current definition of a lot of record requires you to either subdivide the lot or have some sort of a grand thought of development, right? And some of the language in that makes it hard to determine if it's grandfathered or not, so. It was a simple clerical edit in order to help them understand, is this a developable piece or not, is it a lot of record, yes or no? And we'd included it originally in the M. Zoning text amendment proposal here to facilitate that. But as we've been working on three or four other text amendments, we were looking to pull that lot of record out of this proposal. And put it in another one that we'll be considering tonight. So there's, there's a lot of language that's kind of coming together. The M zone language, there's, there's work to be done, and we, we agree, especially when it comes to clarification, certain uses, duplicability of certain uses. Quantities, you know, there's work to be done.
So is our recommendation necessary for them to work? To move forward in Western Weaver camp?
It would be, unless we want to just allow the MB one considerations altogether. We initially, we were trying to get this all to push through, we had initially just wanted to adjust in one and two and three out west.
So, so we could, we could recommend that their need out west. Move forward, while allowing further time to look at the MB one that only affects the valley.
We could do that, the, the struggle though is we would have to have. The MB one is a column in the table, and all the uses are applicable to all the M zones, and it's whether it's permitted or not permitted in. So if we were to just strike MB one and say, I'm not going to look at this, and we have to have MB one standing on. So what ended up happening is this process to put a business out west, slow down after we've moved this forward. So it's a, okay, maybe let's put the MB one zones back into this proposal, we'll talk to the argument. But try not to choose our uses much, so what we tried to do is leave the table mostly unchanged. Where we identified some issues like with the veterinary hospital, we said, okay, let's make it quick so that we'll change, make this consistent. And that was the intention, and then we wanted to make that a little bit more simple, pull a lot of record out, put it in different. It just simply didn't get changed.
I feel like if we're going to do this, we should do it, like I say, we're going to have a manufacturing zone, and we only have so much of it. We should say, okay, well, self-storage isn't manufacturing, so we're not going to have. I mean, something like that, not saying and trying to strike anybody doing self-storage, I'm just saying like, we're going to do it, are we going to do it, are we going to just? Kind of really, really be like, hey, like, I think that'll be all right, I like that idea. Um, so I, I do feel like, like you say, it's probably needs to be a little bit more than that. Yeah, that's the point. So what happens when there's nothing left and people want to do more and need more of that?
Someone could apply for a zoning change, basically. If there's a need, someone could come in and apply for a zoning change.
Rick, if we table this till the first, and that's a work session, does that, uh, is that something we can vote on after it gets tweaked by then? Are we allowed to?
Yeah.
Vote at that work session?
We could put something on there for, um, voting approval.
And does that give you enough time to adjust and still keep whoever in the west in play?
It doesn't, unfortunately, so this week Charlie and I are working on the general plan out west, um, I'm going to be out of town all next week. We'd be.
We'd have to postpone it till probably not even the.
Need next month.
Yeah, the next month, after next month, because our meeting is on the fifteen. Because we've shifted that because of President's face, so we probably.
My concern is, we're not trying to unravel the M zone and look at every single use and look at every single clarification that we can make. As part of this, this proposal, the proposal mostly is to protect that manufacturing use out west. Try not to touch the M zones too much under this proposal, there's a couple that we adjusted, that's why I wanted to go through the use table and, and let you know which ones would be changing. Or staying the same, uh, because technically that is a change to those uses, but that there's a lot more work to be done, we understand that.
Okay, well, my suggestion would be to not let the, let perfect be the enemy of good. If possible, keep it going and tweak it later if you need to, but. We currently have a, uh, motion on the, on the floor, so. Would, we would just vote it up or vote it down? Okay, so it's currently.
Is there anything we can do to move west forward tonight? And yet have an opportunity in the future to.
I think we should plan to revisit this and redo this. But yet we can make these small tweaks now and then plan to redo it, because like I said, I think crazy signals. Want manufacturing. We should kind of, manufacturing, we should say, hey, no, that's manufacturing, this is commercial. Big zone, it's commercial, you can do all kinds of.
Keep in mind, the, the, the table is going to have a big long list of things, because it's applicable out west, it's applicable in the M one, two, three, MB one. What's important to look at is where, what is and is not permitted in just MB one. If you look down that list, the vast majority is going to say N, with some, you know, conditionals, some permitted. Now, although we think it is, is most appropriate up in, up in the valley, but we do know there's work to be done, and that's, that's our intention to come back and clear it up even further.
Yeah, you definitely can.
Okay, all those in favor of the current tabling motion? Say aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion does not carry, okay, I'll go ahead and accept another motion.
Before moving on that, what, was there something in the verbiage I didn't catch that you needed to be looked at?
Yeah, that's right, if, if, for example, there were to be a motion to pass this, we'd be okay. Um, but if, if you do want to table it or we look at it, um, then I, we don't have to, I'm just asking if. Since it's already on another proposal tonight, we can talk about it and, and address it separately. And that's just that last sentence where we're talking about the definition of a lot of record, where is that? So let me go to the top, first page of the staff report, very top. Yeah, it's very tough and.
Right, but where's the, where's the, what the amendment to change it, where, where's the definition?
Right, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To. Prove. I don't have my verbiage, I need. Okay. The ZTA twenty twenty-one dash zero eight. Command various sections of the county zoning ordinance to adjust and clarify permitted and. Conditional uses and site development standards in the manufacturing zones of MB one, M one, M two, and M three to include general. Administrative and clerical amendments along with the county initiative, initiative proposal to amend the, the, you know. Unified land use codes definitions of a lot of record. According. Uh, to the. Staff. Uh, recommendations. Uh, with. A couple of amendments. That kennel. Be listed as a non, uh, non-permitted use in the MB one. That. Um, the bakery goods manufacturing line item in the, in the chart, you change to just say bakery. And. That on the track or course for off-road vehicles indoor be listed as a non-committed use. Oh, and the contractor. Equipment, storage yard, or rental of equipment used by contractors indoor or outdoor, we change from a permitted use to a conditional use.
Okay, one question.
A bakery.
Oh, what is it now?
Want to add permitted to.
We want to add permitted.
Oh, yes, and change that to a permitted use.
I think it's bakery goods manufacturing is permitted rather than not allowed.
Change the verbiage to bakery as a permitted, and then, uh, and have the bakery as a permitted use.
You got all that down, what do you think, Cortland? This is not even my place to say, but bakery versus bakery goods manufacturing. I just want to make sure you clarify that to what the commission wants it to be, because right now it's listed as bakery goods manufacturing. If you change that to bakery, it may have a different meaning. And that may leave bakery goods manufacturing kind of unclear.
Yeah, you might want to stick with bakery manufacturing as permitted.
Professional burden. The way it's written, bakery goods manufacturing.
Our clarification, yeah.
Should we do a second and then discuss it and then? Make amendment?
Okay, I'll take a second. Okay, discussion, do you want to clarify?
So we need to change, you would maybe recommend changing the bakery to as a permitted use under bakery goods? I don't, I'm not clear. Okay, as a permitted use then?
We manufactured.
Or a conditional use.
Okay, it's not allowed.
Right term is permitted, so bakery manufacturing.
Okay, bakery, bakery manufacturing as a permitted use. I'll amend.
That's bakery goods manufacturing. Where it's written now.
Okay, okay, I would like to amend my motion to add. Under the bakery category for it to say bakery good manufacturing as a permitted use.
Discussion, I have to ask, maybe, maybe I'm missing this, with this last part, the lot of record, what exactly are we changing?
So I'd recommend we just take it out of this motion, we'll talk about it on the next agenda item. Just, just strike it, just a simple.
Okay, do I need to amend that then?
If you could accept as a friendly motion.
I'd like to make a friendly motion or friendly amendment to strike the. Where would I even start with that, the unified definition of a lot of, the definition of the lot of record from your.
I accept that friendly amendment.
Quick, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, any opposed? Carries.
Thank you, and I apologize for the confusion commissioners. Okay, ready to move on? Okay, I'm going to try to keep this CAFO as superficial, and if we need to dive in more, we can. Also address the question about the horses that we talked about earlier. A proposal that we've discussed with Western Weaver and their recommendation to the commission, the county commission. That any new large concentrated animal feeding operations be cited in Western Weaver in E three. And M three zones as conditional uses. And the existing uses that would meet the definition of large CAFO would be allowed to continue operating as non-conforming uses. But they wouldn't be allowed to expand. So up in the upper valley, if that proposal were to move forward, we would not be allowing any new large CAFOs in the upper valley. And any existing operations that were legally established would be able to continue as non-conforming uses. The question about the horses is you can have a stable, and you can have multiple horses in U B three zone, but it is limited to. Two horses per half acre. Of area that is dedicated to those horses. And that is the current language, and that would be what would be proposed going further, so under the current new bridge.
Scott, which ones, what's the proposal that the, the county commissioners wanted, this version two?
It was this version that we're proposing, but it would allow for, it would require a buffer around any new large CAFO. So if a new CAFO were to want to come in a large CAFO at new three zone, for example. You'd have to have enough land to cite their operation with enough of a buffer between their operation and then adjacent use. So they would like to see that added to any, any potential use.
Description of a buffer.
Um, this current proposal does not, so we would need to identify what that buffer would be before we take it to the county commission next week. But the, the initial thought was maybe a quarter mile.
Need large scale.
So this, if you can see, here's the definition of. Stable, non-commercial, so horses shall be for non-commercial use only. No more than two horses shall be kept for each one half acre of land used for the horses. No more than two horses shall be kept for each one half acre of land used for the horses. And that's a permitted use in the AV three zone. So under today's language, that's from a scale perspective, that's what you have to have from a land perspective to supplement.
Sorry, one clarification on the like the cattle, for example, it's permitted currently. Is there anything in there that any restrictions per?
There is. So let me actually show you a
Not changing from what's current.
What's current is they would be allowed, if if this proposal goes forward, they would be allowed to operate indefinitely if they were legally established as non conforming uses. So if you, for example, had a farm for raising and grazing of horses, cattle, sheep or goats, it's permitted. But there are also some special provisions that come along with that use. The special provisions for the raising and grazing of horses, cattle, sheep or goats is listed here. So this particular use shall not include the supplementary or full feeding of the animals in conjunction with any livestock feed yard, livestock sales or slaughterhouse, except when in compliance with the following. So it's basically saying you can't have one of these operations if you don't exceed a density of twenty five head per acre of used land in the AV three zone. And it may only be carried on during the period of September fifteenth to April fifteenth. It shall be not closer than three hundred feet any dwelling, public or semi public building on an adjacent parcel of land. And it shall not include the erection of any permanent fences, crow, shoot, structures, or buildings normally associated with the feeding operation. So in a nutshell, if you guys have grazing animals, you can bring them in and have them concentrated, supplementally fed during winter months. But there is a maximum concentration in the AV three zone of horses, for example, of twenty five head on one, when you bring them in for the winter to supplement. Otherwise, you need to have them be at a lower density. Scott, some of these special provisions call for five acre use, is that new? No, that's existing. This is all of the existing.
Really quick, did I hear you say they can't be for commercial, can't be for commercial, you see there?
It would be for non commercial.
So for instance, Sunnyfield Farm, he's doing that for commercial operation.
He's also zoned commercially.
Okay. The all of the property?
No, there's a portion of it that is.
Yeah, but where he's keeping the animals, it's not commercial. I don't think down by the reservoir where they go.
Is he grazing them over there?
And he's grazing them there and that's there for commercial. He sells those. So I just see think this is not conducive with Dr. Kelly. I don't know.
This is, this is it. So the use is a farm. So a farm for raising and grazing horses, cattle, sheep or goats, every farmer is going to sell what they have, right? So there's a difference, a little bit of a difference there. To some extent, it's scale. When you get to a point where you just have a concentrated feed operation where they're just being brought in to fatten up and then so to slaughter. That's different from like the grazing operation of farming, maybe of the system and then without having them concentrated year round for supplement.
And no, my dad bred and raised horses wherever and there and and we have the property back then, but I think there's some that still have breeding and they're doing the breeding.
I agree with you. There's some concern. There's, you know, like these five acre, I know some is like there, but there's a lot of farms up there that are already doing they're smaller than five acres and they're doing a lot of commercial farming. Cow, meat selling, that kind of thing.
Like a hobby farm?
That we're kind of thinking. Family farm, isn't there a definition of a family farm?
No, I mean, the the definition is here. I mean, it's 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 pretty clear. It's a farm for these things and then it gives you parameters for the scale that you can keep them concentrated, but any farm is going to sell.
Personal use, so isn't there a personal use?
And that's where that non commercial, so where we have this use right there, stable, non commercial, that'd be a more personal use. We also have another other language, we have, you know, food production, the family food production on smaller lots, non farm lots per se. So if you have like three acres, you can have some chickens, you can have, you know, some some family food production. It's not right on a commercial scale. So the current language that is here already limits the amount of courses you can have per acre. That's that's not changing. If you already have an existing use, what we're saying here in this proposal is just large CAFOs, so extremely large uses. We're saying up in the valley, you know, those we're not going to own. And the proposal does change a little bit where we're saying the definition of the large CAFO is these thresholds with tons of animals. They have a smaller definition, it's still a concentrated animal feed operation, but it's not reaching that large definition. Then we have grazing, animal grazing, where you have enough land to support your animals.
They have to be out to graze, they can't just be.
No, so they, I mean, they can be out to graze, but they can come into the stable, they can come in as long as you're able to, under this definition of the concentration. You know, if you're gonna if you're gonna supplementally or full feed those animals, you have to meet the criteria of one, two, four.
They couldn't be for more than forty five days. I'm just thinking, we probably won't revisit this for a long time. It may be permitted, non permitted already. But I think there must be tons of people in the valley who are non compliant with this. And I mean, I just another person came to mind, she has several, quite a few horses and she uses them for therapeutic therapeutic reasons. She doesn't, didn't have bakery, I don't think. I can just think off the top of my head, several people, maybe non compliant, I don't know. Back to conditional or something.
Let me read the definition of animal grazing and see if that continues to be a concern. Okay, so the the term animal grazing, as we're adding this definition, means the pasturing or ranging of animals for the purpose of grazing and an animal density does that does not exceed the land's ability to perpetually sustain vegetation for grazing during the normal growing season. So that's that's animal grazing, that's a permitted use in the AV three zone.
And we're also adding that it should not be closer to three hundred feet dwelling, so you have a house, it's three hundred feet. You got three acres, three hundred feet means I can't put a horse in my front yard.
But you can also rotate them, right? So you can rotate. So as long as you can rotate them. Let me also show you this. We're kind of looking at this just from.
Did you change that to condition I use on the county's part?
Let me, let's come back to that if that's okay. Let me get to where we are in the proposal. Let's read the language and make sure we're all understanding what the proposal is.
And everything I'm fine with that, that would go in a heartbeat. My, no, this is.
Isn't the blue wording what we're adding?
That's correct. Okay, so if we look under the the new special regulation for this new definition of animal grazing. So you're saying this use shall not include the supplementary or full feeding of the animals, except when in compliance with the following. And we're saying one, two, three, and four. What I showed you before was the existing language that had that setback and had that concentration of twenty five head per acre and maybe three zone, okay? So let's look at these one through four. This is what we replaced that, what we saw before. So one, it may only be carried on during times that are reasonable and necessary due to lack of natural growing feed. As a result, seasonal changes or extreme and temporary meteorological events. And so if there's a drought, flood, whatever, then that could change when you're able to supplement and feed them. Two, you shall not exceed the density of twenty five head per use of land per acre of used land in the AV three and the one zones and forty in the U two and three. Three, it shall not be closer than three hundred feet any drawing, public or semi public building on an adjoining parcel of land. And four, it shall not include the erection of any permanent fences, crowds, shoot, structures, or other buildings normally associated with an animal feeding operation. So some of that language stayed the same, right? But some of it is is a little bit different where we're saying if there's any, you know, meteorological event where you need to bring them in to the crowd and supplementally feed them, then you can. But you still need to, as before, keep a certain density, have a certain setback and not have any of these permanent structures that would make it look more like a permanent feeding operation year round operation as well. So that's under animal grazing. Yeah, that's a permitted use anywhere in the county. The animal feeding operation is where we get into a concentrated use, but it doesn't like meet the threshold of a large concentrated animal feeding operation. Yes, let's read through that and just make sure we're on the same page. So an animal feeding operation, this use may include supplemental or full feeding. However, it is prohibited to feed animals in the market refuse, house refuse, garbage, or oil field that was not produced on the premises. Now, the following additional standards apply for hog feeding, so specific set of requirements. All pens and housing for hog shall be concrete and maintained in a san- sanitary manner. Two, drainage structures and disposal of animals shall be provided and properly maintained as required by the local health department. So we're saying you can supplementally feed them either supplemental or full feed. And then the definition. Let's come back up to the definition section. So the term animal feeding operation means a lot or facility where the following conditions are met. So A, animals have been, are, or will be stable, they're confined and fed and maintained for a total of forty five days or more in any twelve month period. And B, the area of confinement devoted to the feeding of the animals does not sustain grazing vegetation during the normal growing season for the purpose of feeding confined animals. So we're no longer able to grow and supplement or sustain these animals on on this larger, this large scale of an operation. So when we look at the use table in the AV three zone animal grazing, so this is the least intensive where we're able to sustain our animals with the vegetation on site. That's a permitted use, so anybody can do that. And we get into a concentrated where we're either feeding them supplementally or full time supplement. We're saying that that's not permitted in the AV three zone. And then, of course, the proposal is for a large CAFO animal feeding operation is it would not be permitted. So I think that the crux of the concern we have Commissioner Francis is when it comes specifically to horses and having, you know, horses in maybe a smaller area, correct? We've tried to separate this into three tiers, the least impactful being that animal grazing, we have enough land to graze them. The middle tier being where it is concentrated, but it's not towards a large scale. And then obviously the worst scale. In the valley, we're saying if you're able to graze your animals and have enough land to do so, you can do that in the UV freezing. And then there are special provisions where you can bring them in supplementally feed them during those those meteorological events or during winter months, et cetera. But when it comes to horses, you're still allowed to do that, just as it to horses per.
Anything though? I mean, what's in?
So the existing language limits you to two horses per half acre. The currently proposed language would do the same. And I'm not sure, we may want to have to do some some research to see what concentrations are currently existing on some of these potentially non conforming uses and see if that two horses per acre is adequate, whether if there may be a health concern from the health department where we get too concentrated and get concerned with groundwater, I'm not sure. The intention here was not to change anything to do with the horses. It's okay, it's a good question. Not conforming chap would maintain the existing rights of the animals that are there, so that that would not change. Yeah.
You know, the only thing I would add to that is is I can think of several examples driving around South Fork, for instance, where there's, I don't know, three or four horses on an acre. There's not a stitch of grass left and they're throwing hay at them. But it smells, there's dust. I mean, it is not a good thing if you live next to where that it's 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 kind of a matter of density. If you have horses on one acre, or if you have two or three, it's just totally different. And maybe none of them are sustainable, but at what point do you stop doing so much?
And if we're maintaining our same regulations that are in place, it still would allow them. When they do get over grazed, it does create engineering issues when we're dealing with sheet flow and drainage issues, especially in the springtime. You don't have any of the root structure to maintain that in place and everything just washing away. So our engineering division would have some concerns about the safety of that when you do upgrade certain areas. Because we do have a lot of sheet flow issues. What specifically, Commissioner Francis, I need, what's the most specific thing we'd like to see changed? But, yeah, listen, I'm trying, I'm trying to follow this, I'm sure.
So you're saying if their land cannot sustain the men and animals they have, they would then not, they would not fit under that animal grazing definition and regulations, they would then move up into the middle tier where we would call them men and animal feeding operation because they're having to supplement their feed because a land can't sustain them. And that that range goes all the way up to the large concentrated animal feeding operation where we're at, you know, seven hundred dairy cows and thousands of chickens and what have you. If I, if I may.
So so she would be considered grandfathered in. So going forward, all we're saying, if I correct, understand this correctly, all we're saying is hey, if you're going to come up and do animals, you should have enough land to do this. Is that what I understand we're trying to do? Because that's fair, because if we get someone there and it gets into financial problems, it's not safe to the animals, you know, yeah, they might have a dream, but it's not right for us to encourage them.
So maybe think about this, if we were to change it to a conditional use, those people were to come in.
I agree with your concern with the other exception, the people that are already doing it, if someone's coming in that wants to do it, they should take into consideration they should be able to feed the Great question.
Have to come in and submit. If someone was complaining about them, they would come in, submit a non conforming application, we would go through the process and make sure that they were legal at the time. There's definitely ways to occur. There may be the nuisance provisions and to do with zoning. If somebody's creating and there could be, yeah, lots of dust and soil pollution, then that's a nuisance. We'd have to look at that, we'd have to look at the land use because there are the enforcement lines that we can enforce as the land use element.
We'd have to look at that, we'd have to look at the land use, because we're like enforcement wise, we can enforce this land use element. So I have a question. Under definitions, you define animal feeding and animal feeding large concentration.
Go up one more page, that's where that animal grazing definition is going to be, it's separated by pages. No, actually, the definitions at the very top are together, but when you get down a little bit further, it separates us too, as far as the special regulations for them.
Something sparked this whole conversation.
The state legislature gave us a deadline to address this particular use, the large CAFO. Use any new large CAFOs coming in, they said, you need to have, if you want to have a regulation in place, you need to have it by, I don't know, later than February first of twenty twenty-two.
So what we're, what we're looking at here, if we, if I wanted, if I had three acres and I wanted to put one cow or two cows or whatever, that I have sufficient water, sufficient growing capabilities to feed them. That there's nothing that's going to stop, nor have chickens, this isn't stopping.
As long as that acreage consists in that cow, you know, during, during summer, winter.
Winter time, not so.
And that's where the provisions allow for you to supplementally feed that now.
So I know a lot of people that's got twenty acres, five to ten cows, they grow the hay, feed them all year round, but they're confined. That kind of gets rid of the grazing. You can't turn them out and leave it down, they won't benefit.
Yep. So that's where this other special provision comes in, where we talk about how concentrated can you get them in that type of a situation? And so right here, under animal grazing, special regulations, let's say that you have enough acreage to, to farm and grow the hay and then put it in storage for the winter. They're saying that you can do that, but that you still can't exceed the density of twenty-five head per acre of used land in.
And think that's three hundred foot away. The three hundred foot from any dwelling, there's not that many.
Then that's concerning a little.
I think it's, I think it's trying to address if they're joining person, right? So if you've got your neighbor that's like right next to it, you need to do adjacent really.
I have a question, are people considered animals?
What biology question?
I'd be interested in a motion. I, I've got. Wait, no, I take it back.
May I ask one question? I'm trying to wrap my hands around. Animal feeding operations are prohibited. That is combining an animal and feeding it for a total of, it's forty-five days or more during a twelve-month period.
No, so it's a definition. Let's, let's, let's just read the definition for an animal feeding operation and then the special regulations for that definition. Make sure we're understanding that, okay? Okay, the definition of an animal feeding operation means a water facility where the following conditions are met. So animals have been, are, or will be stable or confined and fed or maintained for a total of forty-five days or more in any twelve-month period. And the area of confinement devoted to the feeding of the animals does not sustain grazing vegetation during the normal growing season for the purpose of feeding the confined animals. So it is that time period in there, but it also means that within that time period, if you have them in this confined area, that it's not able to sustain itself, the vegetation is unable to sustain.
So hypothetical, somebody's got his horses and winter snows are deep like they used to have. And so that animals are concentrated in a corral or something. And they're there for sixty, ninety days because it's snow deep, there's no place for them to go. Well, they're concentrated, so you meet number two, can't sustain. Okay, and number one, it's more than forty-five days. So you can't do that. It's not permitted. You, you can't do that, you gotta. Okay, but yeah, animal grazing works for that, but where is the? The time limit there is when you need to do it, depending on weather and conditions.
So it's line ninety-one. So line ninety-one is where we have the special regulations for an animal feeding operation. So we say, this may, this use may include supplemental or full feeding. However, it is prohibited to feed animals in market refuse, house refuse, garbage, or also those not produced on the premises. The following additional standards apply for hog feeding, so has specifics to have the hog be. We're saying you can supplementally feed them or full feed them any time of the year.
You, you can do it as long as your barn where you're feeding them is more than three hundred feet away from your house. That's right. Otherwise, it's prohibited.
So your concern is if the winter goes long.
I just know where the borderline is between an animal feeding, which you can't do, and an animal grazing, which you can do as long as it's limited to twenty-five horses.
So the distinction there is whether or not the facility can sustain enough crops during the regular growing season to provide the food for the animals during that time of year. Because if you look at the definitions, going back to B, under animal feeding operation, it is, to qualify as an animal feeding operation, it's the area of confinement devoting, devoted to the feeding of the animals does not sustain grazing vegetation during the normal growing season. If we look down at animal grazing, the density does not exceed, and they're not written exactly like opposite, but they are opposite. The density does not exceed the land's ability to perpetually sustain vegetation for grazing during the normal growing season. So if it sustains enough crops for them to graze during the normal growing season, it's animal grazing. If it doesn't sustain grazing vegetation during the normal growing season, then it's an animal feeding operation.
See, you can hay and store it and still confine them all here.
And that is a permitted use. Right. So you got to make sure if you're feeding your horse and you're growing the food for it. That's in the existing code, as Scott pointed out, so, I mean, you're free to, you're free to, free to bring it up and change it, but that's not a change, so. Yeah. And maybe it should be, I have no, I have no idea.
Well, number, number four, there's a problem also, if you're trying to fit under grazing, you can't have any permanent fence or corral.
And that, the idea there, this is actually something that the recommendation of the Ogden ballot, or sorry, the West and we were planning commission, they had a little bit of part number four as well, because they were concerned, well, everybody's got a fence. You know, everybody's got to have some sort of a structure when they bring them in for the winter time, or when they are going to supplementally feed them. And their recommendation was to strike four. So you can still have a fence, you can still have some facilities to bring them in and keep them safe during the winter months while you are supplementally feeding them. The idea, the intention, I guess, here, and it was probably not executed well, was we don't want this to turn into a bigger thing where it starts to look like it's a year-round, you know, permanent or more robust facilities, where it starts to look like maybe a concentrated feeding operation, where we've got them confined all the time and. So if you're, if you're not comfortable for, we can strike that, it's actually already a recommendation of our.
It seems number four is really problematic if people are trying to take care of their horses.
Who, nobody wants to put a fence over here to take them on their property.
And again, that's part of the existing code, so if you recommend changing it, that's a recommendation. We left it in there, but it's probably a good thing to, to address while we're at it.
Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion to go to public. Public hearing, okay, I have a motion to go to public hearing.
I'll make the motion second.
All those in favor? Okay, does anybody in the public have anything to say about this, be online? Here we go, and I'll take a motion to close public hearing. Motion to close. Okay, favor?
Need a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Chair, I, I wonder if this three hundred feet to any dwelling, if that were amended to be a dwelling on an adjacent property. If you could have it within three hundred feet of your own dwelling.
It, it's right here, it's one of the special regulations for animal grazing. This is actually current language that is being held over to the proposal, so. If you have an animal grazing use, including supplementary or fulfilling the animals. Oh, sorry, let me read it carefully. This use shall not include the supplementary, supplementary or full feeding of the animals except when in compliance of the following. So we're saying you can supplementally feed them as long as you do one through four, and that's where that, that three hundred foot separation.
As long as you're not within three hundred feet.
If you're going to bring them in and concentrate them while you are supplementally feeding them, and that feeding location needs to be three hundred feet raised on the street.
So I'm guessing people in the valley would be doing this, or doing it in their barn.
Everybody's.
Or something, and that may well be do within three hundred feet of theirs, well.
Let me show you the language that actually governs animal setbacks, and we have in a separate section of code. And that might help you guys understand what, if somebody were to be coming in and building in your pole barn, for example, and they want to store some animals, it may not be, you know, maybe for family food production, so it doesn't need any of these definitions per se. I might hope you guys understand. Suggestion, if you do want to change.
Here, look, commission.
Kind of hurts, does this, is this?
That's true, you'd have to come and talk to us and we'd have to identify what your project is and see if it's something we can do. Yeah. So our setback requirements, if you were to come into us and say, I want to put up a pole barn, and I want to put maybe a horse or two in that pole barn. It's okay, here are the setbacks for you to, to place that structure in a property. We would say that no animals or fowl shall be kept or maintained closer than forty feet from any dwelling on that lawn or any dwelling period, and not closer than seventy-five feet from any dwelling on an adjacent lot. Not any barn stable, coop, pen, corral, or enclosure, if the housing, housing or keeping of animals or fowl shall be kept constructed or maintained on this one hundred feet from property line adjacent to the street and not less than twenty-five feet from the lawn. So it's a hundred feet away from the street, forty feet away from your house, and seventy-five feet away from your neighbor's house is kind of what we're saying. I think you're right, I think it does.
Yeah, I think seventy-five, just keep it the same as this. What's the twenty-five foot buffering, you got to put a fence inside the fence?
This, this last piece here? That, that's just from any property line period, so that maybe is your rear property line, stay twenty-five feet away from that. Or if, for example, the home on your neighbor's lot is far enough away, and you can snug it up to twenty-five feet against your property line, even if they're a hundred feet on the other side.
But I think what he's asking is if you have a property, a fence around the property line, basically that says you have to put another fence within twenty-five feet if you want to have animals.
This is, this is just for a corral or a pen or some sort of.
No, that's what I'm saying, though, if you want to have animals on your property, you got to put another fence with it inside that, inside of your fence.
There, you can't, I think that's, that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, that's true. That's fifty feet of property you can't use. Or twenty-five feet of your own property you can't use because you already have a fence on the property.
I think that the enclosure is what is causing that thought process, right? Are you thinking that that's a fence?
For corral.
Yeah, I think what we're saying here is if it's a, if it's a roofed structure.
But your animals can be within, it's got to be twenty-five feet away.
Also says keeping of animals. I think we're getting into the weeds on this, but we, we interpret it when somebody comes in for land use permit and they want to build a barn. We say, here, your setback's been, we're picking at this with fresh eyeballs, we're finding all sorts of issues. But if, if three hundred feet away is, is a concern in the proposal, maybe we stick it to a hundred feet or seventy-five from your neighbor and a hundred feet away from the property line, we could come back and revisit.
Yes.
Because I have some issues with this.
I ever literally come up with the twenty-five feet. Sam, you'll use your whole property to let them, I mean, it's giving them more than anything.
And this is separate. So what we would do is separate from this, to keep them consistently, just I think seventy-five, seventy-five, this. People change, we'd have chains out there, that's got to be changed some other, some other way.
It's only been there since fifty-six. It's only been there since nineteen fifty-six.
I, I do think, I do think we could put this on an agenda item to clean that up, though.
We would need to, you know, we would need to address it in a separate. We can strike number, or we can adjust number three, not necessarily strike it, we still need to keep some sort of setbacks, maybe adjust number three to be a hundred feet. And we unfortunately do have to have this in front of the county commission on, on Tuesday next week, so.
So let's just make it seventy-five feet, match this.
We can do that, yeah.
That's what I was saying, keep it consistent.
Does the general plan require that the valley do maintain as rural? Sounds like rural is contradicted by all these rules and ordinances. Rural until you have too many cows under your property line with the neighbor, right? But we can tell you the stories.
I have, I'll make a motion to approve. Recommend, recommend, recommend for full approval. The Middle County Land Use Code to define and regulate animal grazing, animal feeding operations and large concentrated animal feeding operations, and to include general administrative and protocol adjustments. And to go with recommendations of staff, in the staff report. But to amend or sorry, to strike line item number four. Item, our line item number eighty-nine, number four, I'm sorry. Okay, line item one sixty-nine, item number three, to strike that sentence out of it. And then to adjust line item one sixty-seven to sorry, item one sixty-nine, to adjust the three hundred foot from any dwelling to seventy-five feet to match section one oh eight dash seven dash eight setbacks for animals and fowl.
We want to take that same idea and apply it to lines eighty-seven, eighty-nine, and ninety. They're the exact same special regulations, but they're duplicated. So we have it in one place for the axons, we have it in one place for the manufacturing zones. Because at West, they have these things in the manufacturing zones. So if we're going to adjust the setback to seventy-five feet in both, we would want to do it in both. And if we want to take out the, the permanent, the erection of any permanent fences, crowd shoot structures, et cetera. We take out of both those lines.
So eighty-seven to change to seventy-five, eighty-nine to strike.
And then if you move forward to one sixty-nine, turns out to be seventy-five.
One sixty-nine, line item. One sixty-nine, line item one sixty-nine, change that to seventy-five feet, and line item one. Seventy-one, strike. Well, yeah, line item one seventy-one, two one seventy-two to strike out. That makes sense.
I have a request that you mention what the findings are that you're basing your motion on, and there are findings listed in the staff recommendation. So if it's that, you can just say, based on the findings and the staff recommendation, if it's something different. Mention that.
Okay, based on the findings and the staff recommendations. Items one through four.
Perfect. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next up is ZDA twenty twenty-one dash eleven, public hearing to discuss and take action on the initiated ordinance. Find specific zones for TDRs.
So, you guys ready for some more mental acrobatics?
Yep.
Now this will actually be easier, and it's pretty simple. So this particular text amendment was initiated because when we adopted the EDU ordinance. We adopted it with a requirement that if you want to have a detached EDU, access you growing in your backyard, not attached to your home, but separate from your home. And you don't have a base density of more than two, then you would need to transfer development right from elsewhere in the valley to your property to realize that separate dwelling. So in other words, if you're in a three acre zone, and you have three acres, you have one density right. You can build one dwelling, so most people build their home, and then they come to us and say, I'd like to have an EDU, how can I do that? We have to tell them, it needs to be attached to your house by a B's, or if not more than fifteen feet, or it needs to be in your basement, or above your garage, but it needs to be attached. Nonetheless, you transfer density right to your property from elsewhere in the valley. To have a detached unit, so you have two dwellings that look like two separate wood trucks on your property. And yes, follow that.
EDU, just like, if somebody wants to occupy it, that's what an EDU is.
If it is a separate dwelling unit, needs the definition of the dwelling units, has all the characteristics of a dwelling unit, full kitchen, bathroom, sleeping quarters, it's a dwelling. Whether that is rented or not, if you want to have that, you need to have the density rights to have a second dwelling. Or, so here, it gets a little complicated, let's say that you have some bonus living space in your, your back, back there, for example, you have. A detached garage and have a little bit of a, maybe a rec room of some sort. And you can, you know, keep it to where it's not a full dwelling, maybe you don't have a full stove, maybe you don't have all those facilities, we wouldn't call it a dwelling. But it would be a bonus living space for a permanent dwelling. But it's not a separate dwelling, it can't be rented, separate to a different entity. If you want to have it be a separate dwelling, meet the definition of a separate dwelling. In the Argon Valley, it needs to be attached to your house, we have to use two density rights to build that in your backyard. That makes sense. And what we had.
Three acres.
Depends on your zoning, so if your zoning requires three acre minimum for a lot, the math, that's your base density. We had an individual come through our door, he had five and a quarter acres in a three acre zone, she had technically one density right. He built a home on the property, and wanted to have a detached EDU, he said, okay, you don't have enough density to have a detached EDU, you'd have to have six acres. He said, okay, well, what are the provisions, he said, you can do this, but you need to transfer density right in order to allow for you to have a base density of two to have that second density, that second dwelling. He said, okay, I own some land up in Evergreen, which is up, you know, way up the canyon in the F forty zone, technically, it's a lot of record, by the block has one density right. But land is cheap up there, because they're really small little lots that were created well before the F forty zone was was enacted. He said, well, I own this cheap property, I'll transfer that density right down to my property in the valley and and have a detached EDU. And we looked at our ordinance and said, well, I think we can do that, you know, you're able to move your own density, it's a thing about. So he went ahead and executed, transferred the density right and had a detached EDU. When we looked at that, we said, well, that's not really keeping with the intentions of the ordinance, the ordinance was trying to recirculate the density from within the valley floor, so we're not taking density outside of the valley and bringing it into the valley itself. We're really increasing density, which is what the general. So he said, we should probably come back into the EDU ordinance and more carefully define where these transferred units come from. In the proposal, you pull up, so we're looking at it. We are just adding a little bit of language to say which zones we can. If you, if you've read the general plan, this exhibit may look familiar, so if the general plan defines valley floor area. And that's what we show here in this, this green polygon. Now, it's not as specific to where we have meets and bounds description, hasn't been surveyed, we know exactly where these these are, but it's a rough approximation as to where the valley floor is. But it does also show the canyon as being part of the valley floor. What we're thinking is, we don't really want to take any density out of the canyon to put into somebody's backyard, that's not necessarily the intention that either. But what we did is we looked at this valley floor and said, what zones most closely represent this delineation? And what we found was the zoning for, I've done a little language. The zoning for RE fifteen, RE twenty, AB three, FE three, FR three, and S one was mostly all contained within that valley floor area. So what we're, what we're injecting into the language is we're saying that if you want to transfer one, and that's reallocated dwelling in it right, may only be transferred from a larger parcel that is located. In one of these zones, and has an available dwelling unit right to be transferred. So if you, if you own additional property in the, in the valley, let's say you own another three acre lot and it has a home on it. We'd say, sorry, you used up that density right, you can't transfer anything because there's nothing to be transferred. So that's the gist of this proposal, we just want to put a little box around where they can come from and go to. Yes, any questions with the, the core of this proposal? In the language that's proposed?
When we hear numbers about the valley only has this many. Density, right, development rights. Under three acres zoning, there are thirty thousand or fifteen, whatever there are, what area do you count when you come up with that number?
So when you look at it from a bigger picture, you just look at raw acreage. When you get down to the subdivision level, and somebody wants to subdivide a very specific piece, and we start to look at, okay, when you subtract out your right of way, we need to subtract out any undeveloped. But when we're looking at it from a bigger picture, we're saying, a rough approximation of how many density rights are available in the valley, we would look at it on a rough.
And the valley is basically defined as the Argon Valley planning area.
Depends on who you ask, some people think the valley is, you know, just where the valley floor is, and some people think it's anything east of the mouth of the canyon.
But, but when the, when the math is done, to come up with this magic number. Does it not include the entire Argon Valley planning area?
And the zoning that's associated with it.
Okay, so. This gentleman is transferring, intends to transfer a development right from, where is it?
Oh, this, this gentleman that, that I.
Sour dough or someone like.
Yeah, the example I gave you.
Okay, but that's within the Argon Valley planning area. So he's just doing exactly what was intended, he's taking a right from somewhere within the Argon Valley planning area. And putting it somewhere else, you know, Argon Valley planning area.
Yeah, he is following the letter of the law.
Okay.
I don't think that was our intention, though.
No.
The intention was to keep the density in the valley and not encourage. All the other density hiding in the foothills back onto the valley floor, we're trying to get rid of it.
I don't know, we're discussing.
So like, like. I mean, all the ski resorts have really high density, we won't bring all that to the valley floor, which is what, if we don't change this, we can do that.
That was never the intention of the general plan.
To powder mountains.
So is the valley floor defined somewhere?
That's the math.
That was that math.
Yeah, let me go back to, it's. And that's identified in the general. Yeah, and we initially, our thought was, why don't we just adopt this exhibit as our, our available sending area, but. From a legal perspective, we were concerned about this creating a zone, and if we create a new zone, we have to notify everybody within this zone with a postcard, and it would cost us a lot of money to do that. So we looked at which zones were already established within that rough delineation, and then added that into the text. I think the intention behind the EDU ordinance was, in, in, instead of allowing everybody to develop. Every third acre, or every three acres, and have that sprawl development, maybe we give them the option to transfer right and preserve some of that open farm ground. I think that was the, the general intention, and when we started pulling that out of, outside of the valley floor and bringing it into the valley floor, that's where we felt like it wasn't keeping with the spirit of what was intended.
Was this, as you defined it, pretty well defined. Obviously, you had to strike the map, this is going to be well defined, is there still AV?
Yeah, let me show you the, the actual zoning map, and I'll see how, pretty, pretty closely follows that same delineation.
Just want to make sure if we're gonna do that, that's, that's still leaving.
So legal nonconforming one acre lot would have wind development, that's correct. Not because no, does not want to load earlier, so maybe it's true. Okay, so. This is what you do there. So, we think that's F five, you can pass it in the upper foothills, in this open space, you have forty. All of that is outside of the valley floor, so that's kind of up in the foothills, far enough up to where the slopes are a challenge to develop. What we're kind of following is this FE three, going around here.
Just not the F forty.
Yeah, just not the F five or the F forty. And obviously, the DRR one, we don't want to transfer density out of the resorts back down into the valley floor, but it roughly. Shows these areas in that delineation, and if we pop back over, you're gonna see.
Go back to the map, Scott, and there's like some F, R three.
Let's see if I can share them side by side at a scale that's still legible. So this, this, this straight line on the south, that follows this F three. So it shows the valley floor, but it also actually pulls out this, like the CBR one, the DRR one, and then some of the commercial CB two, none of that is proposed as part of this, these zones that are listed. In the proposal, but it does fairly closely, you know, actually very closely follow this valley floor that is shown. And but not the canyon, the canyon is also excluded, so that's the FR one and CBR one, versus.
Was that project, or that property you were talking about in like an F forty, is that where it was at?
Yeah, it was way up in Evergreen, kind of over in this area. Yeah, so that, that all developed as one acre lots, a lot of them smaller than that, and some of them don't even percolate, so not even developable, but technically they're. Lots of record if we can find a way to get them to percolate or meet some sort of health department requirement for such a system.
What about the FR three zones at my powder mountain?
Yeah. FR three is listed, so they could transfer out of that FR three down as it's proposed. Any other FR three that we have is in the Wolf Creek area. And a lot of that's mostly developed. And you might know better than I, how much FR three zoning is still undeveloped in the. Wolf Creek area. So, yeah, I mean, that, that is a good observation. We could pull that out of the list, and it would only impact what is in Wolf Creek. And then up here, new powder. What about that F five, that looks pretty flat. Out further east to me, up here on the bench. Over here in this little bit. Yeah, there's some that goes here, what we were concerned about if we added F five, is F five technically goes all the way up the canyon here towards Cozy.
No, Scott, I don't see why you would want FR three in this list, because they're already in villages, you're not gonna want to move them from the village to the neighborhood with the.
That's a good observation.
Is again to go the other way towards, or towards.
Resorts.
Cluster.
Yeah, I don't know, but that's a pretty big statement. I don't need it, I'm just saying.
It should be, it should be concentrated, not in someone's back there, yeah.
Yeah, we toyed with the idea of F five, and we threw F five in this, as we know. But it doesn't follow this valley four exhibit very closely, and so we kind of shy away from, and then also this F five that runs up the canyon towards Cozy, we necessarily want that density coming down into the valley floor. It's the O one, open space.
Okay, and if you wanted us to come back in and look at this in more detail, we were wanting to get a quick Band-Aid on this, so that it doesn't get out of hand. That would never be an intention of plan, take things from the F forty. So if you wanted to, you know, strike some of these, at least if you can.
I think we, I think we should strike that, personally, strike that F three, maybe leave that five out for now.
It seems like the case in point, the guy needed. Three quarters of an acre more, is that right?
It's pretty close, but not close enough, yeah, and in that instance, it really wasn't that big of an issue. But the concern was, we were taking something that was contrary to plan. And saw that, it was like, turn it out, we want to strike that block, so it doesn't happen.
Still like right now, couldn't you pull from single basin, you put in that valley floor, you want it based on what you said?
How the word is currently written, so. We wanted that changed quickly. If you think about it, if somebody really wants to find a way to quickly efficiently and cheaply get a detached EDU, and they don't have the acres, they're gonna go find the lowest hanging fruit, and those are too quickly on some of those. Difficult to develop, you know, parcels, lots that can't percolate or that maybe in the canyon, but they can't build because they can't return setbacks, and those tiny parcels in the canyon, so. We could first see this become, you know, the lowest hanging fruit being transferred in.
I wish there were ways to. Say, all you need is a half an acre or something, yeah, let's take it.
And we.
A full forty acre development right from somewhere, to give you your half acre.
We gave him the opportunity to go and talk about his neighbors, and he did, but the neighbors is U dot, and then one other owner that wasn't interested in settling, so it's kind of out of luck there.
Okay, entertain a motion for public hearing.
Can I also talk about the lot of record in this?
No. Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, you guys, I know it's a pain, this is, this is something that's kind of been a thorn in the side of our, our backs, is. When people come in and they say, do I have grandfathered lot, yes or no, the rules right now are. It requires you to do quite a bit of research, and, and that's not what we're concerned about, what we're concerned about is. Let me show you the language here. So any one of these definitions, one through seven, is what we're currently working with. So if, if, for example, you have a parcel of land, and it's identified. and it's identified as a building lot, even if it's on an unrecorded subdivision that, you know, they may have gone through the process of trying to subdivide it back in the days to to record the subdivision, we're saying, okay, well, grandfather you and if it met zone at the time of its creation. Um, if it's in a subdivision, so divided a lot, no questions, a lot of record, that one's easy. Um, if it's described in a deed sales contractor survey, um, honor before January first of sixty six, we'd say, okay, that's probably grandfathered lot because that was prior to zoning. Uh, number four, this is where it was tricky. But we're saying that it's either a lot or a parcel described in a deed sales contractor survey that was reported in the office of uh, the leader candidate quarter. And it said in between January first of sixty six and June thirtieth of ninety two and also comply with zoning when it was created. That we would then say it's a lot of record. What's challenging is June thirtieth of ninety two. It's, it's hard for us to determine when some of these changes are because the, the reporter's plots are finalized on the thirty first of December. So something can happen in that six month time period that it's hard for us to track down. So we, we adjusted that, uh, that date to the end of the year. So in between that period. Um, or if you had a home that existed prior to December thirty first of ninety two, we'd say probably not, you know, the current time. Number six was added because of some of these large scale developments out West where they're looking at feasibility and saying, we've got to go through the subdivision before I can call this a lot of record. But we have more land than any zone requires in county. So we just said, we didn't have an amnesty clause. If you're a hundred acres or larger, you're going to need any zoning anyways. Um, and then we, we went on as well. If you have a variance to the board of adjustment, there's previous. Um, but then we also said in number eight, a parcel or lot that meets the criteria of A two G above. So it changes the lettering from that seven to A three G. Change. So if you are, if you meet any of the definitions of water record, um, we are saying that you can reconfigure that lot of record as long as one, the reconfiguration does not make the parcel a lot more nonconforming. So we aren't making it any smaller or skinnier. Um, no new water parcels created, so you're not trained to divide it and create more lots out of that lot of record. Um, and then all affected properties outside of a platted subdivision. If you are in a subdivision, you need to amend your subdivision plot. If you have a lot of record, you want to add more land to it, great. That's fine. This is long as you're not creating more lots or making it more nonconforming. That would help us in some of these determinations greatly. So this was, this is what we were confused about in that first proposal. We pulled it out of that and put it in this one. So we apologize for the confusion. If you have any questions on this language.
What about a one lot subdivision?
Yeah, like you're creating a new one lot subdivision?
No.
If you're a lot of record, you would say, if you're a one, if you're a subdivided lot, um, you would say you're a lot of record. If you want to amend your lot, you need to amend the subdivision plot. That makes sense. So if you're, if you're a platted lot in this subdivision, if you want to change your boundaries, you need to amend your subdivision plot to let that happen. A lot of these are meets and bounds description parcels that were created long time ago. And we have that grandfather development, right? Because we're a lot of records, but now how do we amend without, you know, and go through dramatic changes of the subdivision process? Where, where are listed A two G? That's a good catch. You catch all these little things. That's one through seven. So the formatting when we pasted it into Word changed it to a numbered list versus an A two G list. So we'll make that adjustment. Scott, do you have any more change?
That's it.
Motion. Is there a motion to carry? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Is everybody in the public who has something? Okay, hearing none. Except the motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
All those in favor? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Additional comments about any of these? And before we motion to vote?
Thank you for asking the hard questions. We appreciate it.
Okay, all accept the motion. Everybody want to make a motion?
I'd like to go home. Make a motion to, to, to recommend for approval. County Initiative Orange to define specific zones in the Ogden Valley Planning Area where dwelling rights may be transferred for the purposes constructing detached accessory, accessory dwelling units to adjust the definitions to a lot of record and to include general administrative and clerical amendments as recommended in the staff report with exception with changes to the under chapter one oh eight dash nineteen subsection or section sub two. Line one to strike F R three. And the finding also subject to the findings in the staff recommendation to, I think we need to change the line eight on a lot of record to the criteria of one through seven in this definition.
All right. Do I have a second? Hey, wait for the discussion. All those in favor of the motion as stated? Say aye.
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 You opposed?
Aye.
Yes.
Let me explain why. I, I don't think the idea that you have to transfer development rights for an accessory dwelling unit is consistent with principles of good planning, as I understand, because of it. These eighty use really add to the efficient use of land and the ability of landowners to use their land to its best purpose. The family members live there or grandma or whatever. And I've always felt that requiring an A D U transfer, uh, excuse me, a T D R transfer to allow that is really putting the burden on people that may not be able to afford it. For that reason, my negative vote.
Sounds good. All right. Um, okay, so next up on our agenda are elections for chair and vice chair for twenty twenty two. So, uh, do I have any recommendations for chair?
Our bylaws only allow a chair to serve for two terms and John served for two.
Thank you, but that's okay.
Um, yeah, they can only serve for two terms. Muches, we would love to have John serve, serve as vice. He could.
I make the motion that I'd like to nominate Mr. Burton. Mr.?
Okay. Um, I'd like to recommend Trevor. Sure. Chair as well. Anybody else for chair?
I'm going to nominate Shannon. Hannah for chair and John for vice chair. We need to do one at a time.
Yeah. How, okay, so how do we do one position? Do we do?
You can put the names out for nomination and you can vote.
Okay, and how do we vote?
Uh, you can do that by just raise a hand, like one, you can put in the hat. I'd probably recommend just to raise hands on it.
Yeah, okay.
I'd respectfully decline Shannon's gracious nomination.
No.
And fully support Trevor.
Okay. Uh, all right, well, all those in favor of Trevor, raise your hand. Yes, so moved. Congratulations. Uh, okay. Uh, nominations for, uh, vice chair.
I nominate John Lewis.
I'm going to nominate Shannon. She did a great job last time, too. So, um, uh, okay, so am I allowed to?
I'd like to make a recommendation too.
Sure. Yes, anybody else? All right, so we have some guy named Louis, Francis and Torment. Okay, so, uh, we will be voting on Louis Francis Torment. So all those in favor of Torment, raise your hand. All those in favor of Francis will raise your hand. All those in favor of Louis.
Could you like a ranked choice voting like some of these counties and cities do where you go through multiple rounds or something like?
Yeah. Okay, so I, I think Commissioner Francis won that, right? Okay, so congratulations, Commissioner Francis, for another sentence, I mean, uh, period of time. Uh, okay, well, um, so congratulations to the two candidates. That will be for the next, the next meeting, starting from the next meeting, right? Okay. Um, so meeting schedule, the approval of the twenty two, uh, meeting schedule. Do we take a vote on that?
Uh, you just, just raise a hand. It doesn't.
Does everybody agree on the twenty twenty two meeting schedule? All those in favor, put their arms in the air, wave it like you just don't care. Anybody opposed to the meeting schedule? Okay, meeting schedule passes. Uh, approval of the rules of order. So, uh, all those in favor of the current rules of order, raise your hand. Reposed? Rules of order continue. Uh, comment for items not on the agenda. Mister Householder. Uh, seeing none from the public. Uh, any further remarks from planning commissioners?
Yes, I have something I've been thinking about that I want to bring up. Sorry to keep you guys, but I have some thoughts. Um, and I don't know if it's legal or what we have to do, but some developers are not as nice as others. I think that's fair to say, like, they might not play well with the community. Um, they might just want to put in something and then kind of walk away. And it seems like we don't have a lot things we can do to make a change. What we can do to stop that. So if something's in zone and it fits, and the community is against it, maybe because of the way they treated them, the way that they approached the community, not the way that is there anything or is there any thoughts of you guys? I, I was thinking maybe there's some kind of point or word that kind of says, hey, like, we can, we can approve and we can faster than do certain things to get certain points to be able to approve. Uh, something like that. I don't know what legal, I just, I don't know if there's something in place that says, hey, we don't, we don't want to mess with, like, we don't want people coming in and dumping stuff that we don't want. They don't want, they don't want to spend the time to educate the community in the right thing in our community that we can stop. Because it seems that there's a lot of hurdles, but basically there's
I think as long as they're fighting by the law. Something I'm not thinking of.
How about Cortland? What do you think?
Well, from a legal perspective, that may be challenging, but I don't know fully what you have in mind. You have to consider. I'll just call it equal treatment under objective criteria typically, unless there is something clearly spelled out in the ordinance that allows for some subjectivity. And the more you allow for that, um, the more subject it may be to challenge for some kind of discrimination or something. So that it would have to be clarified what you're thinking of. But generally, for a development, it's going to be likely safer to stick to objective criteria.
Yes, that's my thought is we develop some kind of objective criteria, like, for example, we have, you know, forty, fifty or a hundred people come and say that we are against this. Okay, well, then that starts a process where we require the developer to meet with the community and educate or something, you know, just along the lines or some kind of point system that we could give that kind of says, hey, look, because, because we have some developers, you know, I, I'm just, my experience has been like Snow Basin. They have open houses. We have nobody complain about what they do, but nobody comes, nobody has any real concerns. Then others, that's really small developments, and we have people come in and they have their up in arms and they've heard these random things that the developers told them that it's, it's a fight. So I'm just putting it out there as, hey, is there something we could think about or maybe ask for proposals or something that might give us strength to say, hey, look, you really don't play well with us here. So why do we want to let you do something in our neighborhood? Right, I'm asking, can we do it? Is that something that's reasonable? I don't.
So it, there's a fine line when we start looking at those things, because if we oftentimes, there's a, if we start dealing with public clamor um, and listening to what the public has versus what the ordinance has, um, that's illegal. Um, cor- correct. Cor- correct. But there are instances where, um, staff, like for instance, Snow Basin, when they came, we asked them, we said, to get you through that process, we would recommend that you have some neighborhood meetings with the public um, on certain things. Nordic Valley, we've asked them to have some neighborhood meetings with the public. Wolf Creek, they've had neighborhood meetings with the public. When we start seeing larger scale items come in, we ask them to do that. The basin project at the mouth of Old Snow Basin Road, we asked them to do that. Um, whether they're successful at having those neighborhood meetings um, often depends upon the developer's savviness, um, to make them effective. For instance, Snow Basin's public meetings were much more effective than the basins. Um, meetings with the public from what I've heard. And so oftentimes, those are initiated because staff sees the need for those public meetings. But if we wanted to put something more in policy or ordinance and awarded points, uh,
I mean, it's just an idea, you know, I was thinking, because, I mean, just some basic examples. I'm not trying to, but you've got some developers who want, who envision the right thing for the community. They want to live there, you know, that should be worth something. And others are just like, hey, we could have put in a big hotel, be lucky that you're getting what you get, right? Like, and they just tell you tough. And, I mean, not trying to tell people to do, but we just want, I would like there's a layer that could somehow incentivize them to work to play well. You know, I don't know what that looks like. Maybe just.
I'm not aware that the founders put in the constitution a requirement that people have to be nice. They have to follow the law.
So the lot next to you, I can go buy it and just put whatever I want on it and then leave and move, right? That's, that's something that's, you know, just because these have, you know, you can, but that's.
Individual property rights attached to the property ownership, not to the will of the neighbors. The idea that I was here first, I get to decide what every other property in the valley has to pass my subjective arbitrary capricious whims is contrary to our law in this country.
I'm not saying that we have to be.
A, a developer that is. A, a developer that is personable, that smiles, that tries to get along. And is going to gain some personal points. He's going to be, his position will be better accepted. There's a matter of human nature than somebody that comes in like a steamroller. But there's no requirement for a property owner not to be a ste- steamroller and to smile. That I know of. We, we violate somebody's individual property rights that are constitutionally guaranteed if we start saying. Well, we in the neighborhood decided we don't like what you want to do, and we know the law allows it, but we don't want it, and you're a bad guy if you try and do it. And it's commonly here, developers, developers quote, as bad people. And when I, when I hear that, I question, a- and I'd say, well, where do you live? Why live in this house? Well, where did the house come from? Didn't the developer see a need and put the, put this house here so you could live in it? Yeah. Okay, then that developer was a good developer, right? I, I think that's our obligation.
You know, I've, I've watched development for twenty-six years now in the valley. First got here, you know, um, there was a particular developer who came to the planning commission, planning commission was very tough on him. He didn't do himself any favors. He showed up with his lawyer and everybody pointed at everybody, complete brain damage, but it happened, you know, and, and off that project went. And it's been pretty, you know, I think pretty good, uh, you know, the last ten years, twenty years. Um, I have noticed that we're just, it just feels a little bit protected, and it's almost like we're just now starting to see some bigger fish come in and. And, uh, I wouldn't be surprised in the next five or ten years if we get some developers that, you know, big national companies that come in and just say, we don't give a rat's. Whatever, what you think, we're going to do this and this, and these are our rights, and off we go. So I. I hear what you're saying, and I don't know what we do about it, honestly, I wish I did. But I think we really need to be, you know, ready for the next ten years, because the, the big fish are coming. I don't even think they're here yet, but we're just starting to sense them.
And that's my point. I don't want to take away anybody's right to develop. I just want people to do it. I mean, that's what we try and do every day is, is set meaningful planning and grow for the valley. And I'm just saying, we, but basically we have no teeth beside that, which I'm not saying we have that teeth, but just some kind of, you know, like, hey, we're, maybe we're missing something, I don't know, just maybe we look at it, because. We have some that, that, the community as a whole is saying, this is bad for us, but they're just going to do it, so.
Well, the reality is, is.
And we could make recommendations to change the law.
But the planning staff does a good job. The planning staff does a good job keeping those people. If you're not seeing them come to this table, they're doing, they're doing a good job of educating them on, on what they need to do to make it go through. And so I think that you're seeing a lot of responsible development because of the people that strip of their minds. Yeah, and make good recommendations. Well. That's been my answer to myself personally is, okay, what can I do that has an effect? Because, you know, we have so little we can do. What we can do is we can focus on these ordinances and these policies and, and, you know, work as hard as we can to tighten them up. And to always imagine the worst-case scenario, well, what if it's not acres, and what if it's eighty acres, you know, do we want? You know, that can have a pretty good effect on that guy down the street we haven't met yet. But, uh, what else did we do on that? I'm all ears.
We can look at other communities too and see what they've done and.
That's what I'd like to see. Basically, just get it questioned, ask, because it's coming, we're going to see more of it, we might as well say, hey, we're tight, or, you know, whatever it is we're good with, we'll be gone.
We just need to make sure it stays within our legal premises.
Any other comments?
A huge thanks to Chair Louis for great work in the last couple of years. Thank you very much.
You are a good chair, you've done excellent.
Well, and congratulations to all your big help with vice chair, and I'm glad you're staying up. Thing from planning director?
I just want to, um, thank you for bearing with us on the KFOs. Typically, that's not something, we were just drawn that, that is because of state code. And we don't like to just bring those things to you so quickly, but thank you for working through those issues, and also. The manufacturing changes, that was because of that West, and so there was political pressure put on staff to get that for you, but we like to have things more polished. Before they come before you. And because of our workload that we have going on, that's why you saw the two columns in the MV, um, section, and typically those things don't happen. Um, and so I apologize, but we're trying to get things to you, but some in a more polished way, but those two items were. Not how we typically bring things to you, but we appreciate you working through. Um, on another note, um, we have the planning commission appreciation dinner coming up. Um, we have it scheduled for February tenth. And that's for you and your spouse to come, and typically we have that at a restaurant throughout the community. But because of COVID and things like that, we're going to have that in the Weaver Center Building on the bottom floor, and we'll have it catered and brought in, but. Um, and, but, you know, typically we like to have it in a restaurant throughout the community, but we're using a restaurant in the community.
Social distance.
Yeah, it's not going to be. But, um, I, we do appreciate all you do, and it's, uh, it's small token of our appreciation, but it's, it will be on February tenth from six to seven. Um, I think June sent something out.
A reminder to RSVP to.
And, and our second meeting of the month is the fifteenth this time.
Yes, we changed that because of President. That's all.
Really, really quick, one more time. On minutes, we don't need to go through the approval, make a motion in a second.
Yep.
Just say, does everybody have a chance to read them?
Yep.
And is everyone okay?
Exactly.
Else from legal?
No.
Okay. Wow, my last gavel. It's been an honor, folks. We are adjourned. It's all yours.